Good evening, everyone. The time is now six o'clock. And I would like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, January the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public. Mr. Heinz?
Good evening, City Manager Lorenzo Heinz. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference only pursuant to the County of Sacramento's January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two health order prohibiting in-person city council meetings. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice by the county. Today's agenda states that we are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comments or when a specific agenda item is called, if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. In addition, members of the public may use the call-in feature also described on the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. In in view of the direct video conference and call-in direct opportunities for public comment just described, email comments will not be read out loud during the meeting, but will be distributed to city council and made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Tina, may I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would now join me in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Tina, if you would like to read our replay statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, January twenty-first at nine AM and Saturday, January twenty-second at nine AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com forward slash metro cable fourteen.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item B, agenda approval additions and or deletions. Have anything from the council? All right, just a point of note, I had a conversation with Frank, the city attorney, and moving forward, we're going to ask that agenda items that be pulled from the consent, that request will be done. So when we reach the consent calendar under item F, which is what it states. So I know we haven't been doing that way for a while, but that would be the proper protocol. So to this point forward, when we get to the consent, I'll ask if anybody wants to pull something from the consent calendar at that point. So, moving on to item C, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by four PM the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna now open the public comment. Period. So if you would like to make a public comment, you may do so by raising your hand on Zoom or use the star nine feature if you are on the telephone. Tina, do we have any hands raised or phone comment right now?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, Ms. Rodiker, is there any?
It's just me this evening.
Okay, I was looking for on the zoom. Okay, all right. Again, I have opened the public comment period. I will allow a short time period for the public to make comment. Again, if you're watching on Zoom, you can raise your hand. And we will call on you, or if you were calling in by telephone, you can put star nine, and that will indicate that you would like to speak. All right, do we have any public comment? Hands raised?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, with that, I will now close the public comment. And we will move on to our next item D, presentations. Presentation this evening from Fire Chief Felipe Rodriguez from the Consumnis Community Service Fire District or Fire Department, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor Farmer. Vice Mayor Sandu and members of the city council and Felipe Rodriguez, your fire chief. It is my honor this evening. I thank you very much for asking me to speak and present some information on the fire department and the partnership that we have and the service that we provide to the Galt community. So with that, I have a presentation for you this evening, along with a little bit of a COVID update. And and then our strategic plan that we have going to our board tomorrow evening in as well as some future planning for us, and I'll be open to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I will ask that, if I may, either ask somebody else to change the slide for me or give me the access to do so. Great. So as as many within the community know, the Galt Fire Department has a very rich tradition and history dating back to nineteen twenty-six as the Galt Fire District and then becoming part of the Consumnis Community Services District here in two thousand and six. So we do have members there serving within our two fire stations, one their station forty-five and the other one station forty-six on the east side. So one on each side of the freeway and serve the community very proudly. If you couldn't change the slide to the next one. The update for COVID nineteen, I'm sure everyone is familiar that over the last three weeks or so, right around Christmas time on, we've we've seen quite the spike. But the good news is that although we are seeing a lot of the positive cases, the the gravity of it, the death rate is not as high as it was in years past. It's still a very serious matter, but but we're not seeing that like we have in the past. We are seeing the hospitalizations, but the positive side is that we've had about forty-six thousand new cases in Sacramento County since the beginning of the year. We have seen forty-four deaths occur that have been reported thus far. So the percentage wide wise is not the same as it was back when this first started. And hopefully, it doesn't continue to increase, and we do see that turn. Circle there on the right is is the Galt community, the nine five six three two area code. Zip zip code, sorry. And you'll see that Elk Grove, Folsom are the two areas within Sacramento County that I've seen the most here over the last thirty days. We're hoping to see that turn. Our personnel are responding daily. We're all wearing masks within our fire stations now and and as well as within the fire engine, and as we respond to the community, trying to prevent any spread. We are working alone as I am today. We can work without our mask on, but otherwise, when we are indoors, we're completely covered up and recommending our vaccines for anybody who's willing to to receive one. So next slide. And please feel free to ask any questions as I'm going through these slides. Could turn to, there we go. All right. So over the last several months since about May, we have started working on our strategic plan update for the department. And this will carry us in into about twenty twenty-seven. The the last several months were a lot of work and it was well worth it. We received great community feedback, including community feedback from the Galt community. And we were able to compile all the information, analyze it, and develop a plan for the next five years. As I mentioned, I will be taking this to our board tomorrow evening for approval, but it will be available online for anyone to view thereafter. And I'll just give you a snapshot of a few of the things that came back from the community, both here in Elk Grove and in in Galt as well. But if you could just turn to the next slide. So in order to really come up with a great plan, we looked at our other plans that that we have. And first and foremost, our district's strategic plan that was completed here in two thousand and twenty-one, so that we can align it to support our district's plan. And a lot of great work was done by by our general manager, Josh Green, our strategic management team and a few of our other personnel that put this together. And of course, our board approved this, and we are now carrying this forth. So with that, the fire department was first up to update the plan and following us will be parks, and then we have our other departments as well, administrative services and facility and development that will be updating their plans or creating them. We aligned it as well with our previous plan to carry forth anything that was not able to be completed. As you all know, in two thousand and twenty, the whole world changed with COVID, and we weren't able to complete some of the items in our in our previous plan. So we did carry some of those forward and then created new ones because we have to adapt to what's going on and and things are a little different now. So we're adapting and moving with the changes that are before us. The other plans that or best practices really that we are utilizing that we utilize are the fire and emergency services in the twenty-first century. These are all your best practices, the most critical issues that are facing the fire service. And this was a document that was authored by ICMA, which is an international city and county managers association, and also by the Center for Public Safety Excellence. And this was also submitted to the International Association of Firefighters, IFF, and to give it a once-over, give some input, and all of it was put together in this white paper, and we utilize this to develop our plan. Good. Next slide, please. So some of the priorities that came back from the community, as you see here, the perfect score would have been a four point oh, but emergency medical services, no surprise, that's about seventy-five percent of what we do. And that came up the highest as the number one priority for the community, followed by fire suppression. So all the firefighting, extinguishment of fires, car fires, vegetation fires, houses, commercial, you name it. And followed by fire prevention, so to prevent the fires. And that's all your public education, disaster repairness, inspections, plan review. And that came in at third. And lastly was not that it's not important, it very much is special operations. And so people wonder, what is special operation? So that is all of your technical rescue, water rescue, hazards, materials, anything that's outside of the the normal day-to-day that we that we conduct. However, we look at that and we say, okay, well, how do we prioritize? It's very important for the community to to have the best emergency medical services and fire suppression at the top and and we'll work very hard to to make sure that we carry that out. If you could go to the next slide as well. Expectations. So what else do they expect? And these were ten different items that that were presented to the public. And by a long shot, you could a long way there, you could see fast response times was number one. Perfect score would have been a ten point zero, but fast response times is what is very, very evident that that's what people want is for us to get there quickly. And as we always say, you know, get there quickly, be good at what you do and be nice. There are a few other things, not to spend too much time in that last slide, but you know, making sure that our first responders mental and physical health are are, you know, taken care of. Of course, our fiscal responsibility and making sure that we're doing things within the budget, et cetera. So those were up in the top for us to look at in disaster preparedness. Over the last eleven years, now twelve years, since two thousand and ten, we've seen a steady increase in call volume. These are the quantity of calls for the entire district over these time period. In two thousand and twenty, you see the dip there when everybody stayed home for those few months. Definitely, we saw the difference. A lot of people did not want to go to the hospital. They just stayed home and stayed away, so or stopped calling nine one one. So we did see a decrease, but since then, we've seen an increase once again back to the exact line for the most part in the same trajectory. And if you look at the next slide, they'll show you about what we're projecting for the next several years, as long as we continue with that same growth that we've been seeing. In this year, at two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, we were anticipating we would end up with twenty-two thousand five hundred calls. And we are actually already at twenty-three thousand calls, twenty-three, twenty-two, nine thirty-six exactly for this last year. So we've already beat that, and we expect it to continue to increase. We will keep a close eye on these to make sure that we will adjust as needed. But this is our projection during the strategic plan. So we go to the next one. Where are the calls at? So the different engines that we have, the first two are in Galt. And then the next, we have eight total, but now we have our ninth one. So we did add engine seventy-seven, and we have the truck. Seventy-seven was not calculated as part of this original strategic plan. We just added it in the end of August, beginning of September. But next year, we'll have true numbers for that one. I do have some projections based on what we just have seen over the last few months, which I'll show in a few slides from now. But this is the breakdown by engine. In the next slide, we'll show you the 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 medics, which would be our ambulances. And that's where we're at for ambulances. And the first two, as mentioned, are the two that are in Galt. And then the other ones are in Elk Grove. So we have a total of eight ambulances. We just added our night, our ninth. Sorry, we have now have eight ambulances. We did have one halftime one, but we're now at eight ambulances, so seven. All right, and the next slide. With that, how busy are the ambulances? This is just a heat map that shows you those same ambulances. And what time of day they're busier? You could see that in Galt, we're doing pretty good. And we do have some yellow areas, but not no red areas like you see on the far right medic seventy-four, which is in Laguna. That's our busiest for sure. They're busy during the daytime hours without any rest, about forty percent of that that time. They're they're gonna be busy up in the fifties, I believe, during the the main peak hours. So they don't, the time required to restock and to train or just to even eat some lunch. So we want to balance that out. So that's, these are some of the statistics and the data that we use on when when it's time to add more ambulances. If we could go to the next slide. Great. So where are these calls happening in Galt? It's probably one of the biggest questions that we will get from people within any community is where do the calls happen? And this is a somewhat of a heat map here as well, green or much less calls, but you can see the red, the orange areas are pretty central. There are forty-five is for the most part responding on the west side of the highway ninety-nine, two thousand one hundred fifty times this calendar year that just ended on December thirty-first. And our average response time, ninety percent of the time, they make it within seven minutes and one second. We have a standard of six minutes, but we're hitting about seven minutes right now for engine forty-five or or medic forty-five, anything that comes out of that that fire station on the west side. In the red dot there on the west side of ninety-nine is where forty-five is located right off C Street. All right, engine forty-six or station forty-six will be the next slide, and you'll see that most of their calls are on the east side. And they are also located on the east side, so naturally that's where they will respond. And they did respond twelve hundred and ninety-nine times. And average ninety percent response time of eight minutes and six seconds. So a little bit slower, but they are also responding a little further out on that eastern portion of the city. These response times are not including Harold or Wilton or areas outside that you see outside of our boundaries. These are only within our boundaries. We didn't feel it was fair to show those. If you wanted those numbers, we can also show you those. They're about a minute to a minute and a half longer to get out there on average, to increase the total response time. And we could respond way out to Harold, which will be ten fifteen more minutes. So that's where we're at with the responses for forty-five and forty-six. If you combine the two, which will be our very next slide, you'll see that altogether, they responded to about three thousand four hundred and forty-nine calls. And the combined response time, because forty-five had more, it pulls that number down closer to their seven oh one. And they are now at seven twenty-three for both fire stations. That's what we're currently responding to within that area of our response district, which is the Galt community. And if you were to look at the following slide, that's the entire breakdown from first to ninth with seventy-seven being added at the end of August. So we had about four months or so, just over four months to assess seventy-seven. So we were to multiply it times three, would be around twelve hundred, thirteen hundred calls as well. But our very busiest is the one in Laguna seventy-four. They're at forty-three hundred fifty-five. The overall average response time is somewhere around seven thirty. We're still finalizing that number, but it's gonna be right about there in a total of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six calls this calendar year that we just passed. You'll see the bulk of the calls are spread throughout the district there on the map. And if you were to look at the next one, and it's gonna look a little scary, but this is, you know, part of our future planning. Nothing is set in stone at this point yet, but these circles here are in our ability to to predict where we could reach within a four-minute response time once those areas fill in. So since they're not filled in yet, and some of that's not even annexed at all, or maybe it never will be, we want to be ready for any future growth and to responsibly grow with the city and add the right amount of fire engines and ambulances throughout. And we believe that these areas here that we've identified through our GIS division of the Consumnis Community Services District, this gives us the best idea of where we would probably have to add stations over the next hundred years, you know, however long it takes, if it ever does. So that's the planning for the future, but for now, we're focusing on our two fire stations there, forty-five and forty-six. And then the highlighted area that you could look at, see the streets there, those are all the areas that we can reach within that adopted response time standard. You will see that on the west side of ninety-nine there by Walnut. It's tougher to get to that spot. There's no over crossing there. So that little area is not highlighted, but maybe someday in time that will be an area that we can cover within the forty, station forty-six response zone. So but this is the layout of what we we figure will be able to provide the best service for the community in Galt or in the unincorporated area as it fills in. And then the following slide is pretty much just our updated vision statement. And that's to continue to be mission-focused, be one of those organizations that's mission-focused for sure, that strives for excellence, commits to its values, and serves a growing diverse community. And that's what we're here for and proudly serving our entire district, but most definitely the Galt community. So with that, on the next slide, will just be any questions that you may have. I'll be happy to answer anything for you.
Thank you, Chief, for the thorough presentation. I'm going to go ahead and I'm gonna open up a public comment period before we ask if the council has any questions for you. So if you are watching for the public and you'd like to make comment, maybe raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. Does any of the council have any questions for Chief Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a question, but I'd like to thank you, Fire Chief Rodriguez. Come tonight, give us the update on the fire operation. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
You're welcome, Vice Mayor.
I, Councilman Lozano, go ahead.
I have no necessarily any questions, but I also want to thank the chief for coming, and I just want to put a plug into the community about one of the services that the fire department provides our community and one that has stepped up, in my opinion, in the last few years, and that's our the public outreach down here. With one example is the toy drive and the amount of volunteers that have been gathered over the last few years, and and that has has been a real good program and good success, you know. And and I want to thank the chief and the public education office, the fire department for all they do and engaging our community and making the citizens of Galt feel like they're part of the fire department as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay, Chief Rodriguez, I did have a question, and I and I I don't know if I missed it on the first slide. I don't think I did, but you were showing that, you know, the the gradual increase in calls you we've been getting or your CSD has been getting over the course of the years. Do we know what those increases, like what percent increase has been for, because I, because you know, you serve a sculpt and Elk Grove and then surrounding areas. Is there any way, and you may not have that data right now, but maybe later you could pass it on the council, that shows how much increase there's been in calls within Galt? Because I'm just curious if those huge uptick in calls has been because of, is reflective of the growth in Elk Grove? Or it's actually pretty standard across the board? Or do you have any insight on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, most definitely, I would be able to get you those exact statistics to so that they would be accurate. We had, we've just seen a steady growth throughout all of California and even throughout the nation. The call volume has been increasing, the population's growing, but it's a fair question, and and I would prefer to give you the exact numbers on the growth over the the same time period.
Councilman Vandenberg, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the thorough report, Chief. I was curious, similar numbers, was it affected directly by COVID? That the calls are because of COVID cases, or it's just general growth, general increase?
Right. It's definitely when we do see the spikes in the COVID numbers, the call volume does go up. But it's just general growth and increase, aging population and different insurance plans, et cetera. But just the reality is, is just that people are moving here. People love to live in this area and raise a family here, and and we have to be here for them.
Thank you, sir. Tina, do we, before I close the public comment, is there any hands raised online or on the phone?
No hands raised.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public comment for this item, and I just want to say thank you again, Chief, for the thorough presentation and and pass along to all your guys at all the stations that we appreciate what they do for us. And, you know, medical response is one of those quality of life issues, and I think we're all very happy for what you provide for us. So thank you for the job you guys are doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Farmer.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item E. Will be reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, we have a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. And selecting our selection of the chair and vice chair. And we select Bobby Sing Allen, the chair of the committee, and Rich Desmond is vice chair of the committee. And also staff is actively working on updating the website of the STA logo and also working update on the logo. So staff going to present to the board in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-two. And we also prove the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June twenty twenty twenty-one. And there's order reports in in the staff report, it include STA earned and unmodified clear option. No material weakness or significant deficiencies in internal control report or communicate to the authority management. No significant or unusual transaction. Accounting estimate accruals are appropriate. No corrected or uncorrected misstatement. No corrected or uncorrected misstatement ordered ordered adjustment. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Vice Mayor. Councilman Papinow.
And we'll be having our first Metro Air Quality District Board meeting uh this coming Thursday, so I'll have a report after that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Vanderburg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I um attended a California Legis City's Policy Committee orientation for the uh Community Services Committee, and uh that was uh last week. Um, talked about the governor's budget and some of the focus that's going to happen at California Legis Cities this next uh next year. There was a briefing on the legislative process and what that's going to look like for the year uh as well as uh some funds out there for uh homelessness um a surplus and uh and some park and recreation funding. And so uh we'll get more on that as uh our next meeting is February tenth, and so it'll be a little more focused on the specifics, but uh so that's some good news out there um and some work to do in in relation to policy at the California Legis Cities. Uh, and then uh lastly, uh we have the Secod Board meeting this Thursday uh from nine thirty to noon, and I'll report back on that uh at our next meeting. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, I myself uh had tended recently last week attended uh ad hoc committee with Councilman Lozano. Uh, continued negotiations with Cow Waste. Um, we'll be continuing that next week. And I attended um with the youth commission, our adoptive street uh cleanup this past Saturday was a huge turnout. About twenty two people showed up. We were very pleased. Want to thank Cow Waste for showing up out there with their with their uh staff. And Councilman Vanderburg was present as well, and it was a very good day um seeing the youth authority of the youth the youth commission, sorry, the youth commission out there uh doing their thing, um keeping our town clean. So thank you for that. Next week, we have a uh public safety meeting Monday evening uh six P M. And other than that, I think that's it. So with that, we will move on to our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through eight be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Do I have any items on the consent that would like to be pulled by council? Okay. I will go ahead and open public comment while I read the consent calendar. So if you wish to make a public comment on any of the items in the consent calendar, as I read them, you may do so by raising your hand on Zoom or pressing star nine if you are on the phone. Item one is going to be the minutes of the regular meeting of December twenty first, two thousand twenty one. Item two is going to be receiving file warrants for period ending January seventh, two thousand twenty two. Item three is going to be A B three sixty one resolution making findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings via teleconference. Item four is going to be a treasury report for period ending November twenty twenty one. Item five is the approval of the Summerhorn Ranch Large Lot Final Map. Item six is the Galt Parks Recreation Commission Bylaws. Item seven is going to be the approval of Development Impact Fee Credit Agreement with Richmond American Homes for Katerina Estates subdivision and item eight is going to be the approval of Development Impact Fee Credit Agreement with Richmond American Homes for Cordosa Two subdivision. Do I have any public comment, Tina?
No hands raised.
Okay. Well, with that, I will close the public comment period, and I will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Lozano and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Consent calendar proof five zero. Council Vanderburg, do you have a question? Your hand up. Okay. All right. Moving on to item G, schedule matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening, Tina?
None this evening.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our regular calendar from City Manager's Office. Our first item going to be the coronavirus COVID nineteen update, Mister Heinz.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the COVID nineteen uh pandemic continues on, and we've reinstated this report for public information um back into our normal agenda. So the number of cases, what we've done is that we've measured the cases from the last time we presented this report, which was the November twenty first council meeting um until today's or to this evening's council meeting. So the number of cases in Sacramento County in that intervening time have gone up sixty seven thousand. The number of deaths in Sacramento County have gone up by two hundred and six. The cases here in Galt have gone up by seven hundred and sixty seven cases, and the number of deaths um have gone up by six. Sacramento County, uh the daily case rate is currently, and this is today's daily case rate is one hundred and eighty seven point six per one hundred thousand in population. The last time we had a uh meeting on December twenty first, that case rate was at twenty one per one hundred thousand. So as you can see, it's gone up dramatically. Area hospitals currently have five hundred and forty seven um uh 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 number of individual hospital uh beds with COVID nineteen, although um some of the folks um not necessarily have hospitalized because of COVID nineteen. But um this is up from a hundred and fifty three uh hospitalized cases on November sixteenth. So we're just trying to show the public the dramatic effect um in these cases over the past uh couple of months. Testing continues here in Galt every Thursday, Friday and Saturday at the Jabola Center at the Parks and Recreation Office. Testing details are only available for the Thursday test site run by the city. Uh, one Thursday, January thirteenth, uh total of seven hundred and seventy one tests were administered uh compared to eighty six back in November. The Friday and Saturday testing site is run by Curative. Uh, Curative is currently an appointment only testing site due to the overwhelming demand. Residents can schedule an appointment online at C U R dot T V backslash Galt. Effective January sixth, the Sacramento County Health Officer issued a health order directing public boards, councils, commissions uh and similar to conduct all meetings virtually. Employers and businesses should consider conducting meetings remotely and take other similar measures to mitigate COVID nineteen spread. I wanted to emphasize this to the public that it is the county that we are adhering to by having these virtual meetings. And so um I had a lot of curiosity from the public last fall as to who was um sort of behind the virtual meetings, but I wanted to make it clear to the public that we are following the county's directive. So the update, so one year ago, the number of cases, uh this is the state of California, one year COVID uh comparison. So la- uh one year ago, we had fifty eight thousand or almost fifty nine thousand. Um, as of January ninth of this year, we have a hundred and two thousand cases. And and then we have a number of metrics as we go down this chart. Um, it is interesting to see how we have changed and how uh the impact has changed over the past year. Uh, but unfortunately, the pandemic is still with us uh now in the form of the Ober- Obercon uh variant, and I'm sure the Delta variant is out there as well. And so I'm just gonna ask folks to just take care of themselves and take care of your family and just be safe out there. We want to thank the team down at the uh Parks and Recreation, Nicole Brosman, Monica Lopez, Alyssa Bird, Liliana Chavez, Sean Ferraro, Nick Friend, Donna Garcia, uh uh Carissa Graves, Maritza Hannah 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 Josa or Hannah Hosa, um Taylor Tyler Johnson, Austin Mariana, Rachel Port, Veronica's and Salgado, Brady Stout, Ashley Thompson and Isabel Valencia. And so that's the team that's down there doing the testing and we and we send our appreciation and thanks to that group of folks. And Mayor and Councilmembers, that concludes the COVID nineteen update for January eighteenth.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'm going to uh open public comment on this item. If you are watching online and would like to comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine on the phone. And uh we will call on you. Is there any a public comment currently waiting to speak?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, so I will leave this uh public comment period briefly, and while I'm waiting for that, I will um say and echo what uh City Manager just said. Thank you to all those staff that he named. These are people that are down there, you know, obviously running their test site and working with the public. Um, especially working with obviously a lot of people that are coming to get tested who um uh could be uh infected possibly. Um, so uh you know, they're putting, they're doing their job in the midst of that, and so um they deserve a lot of gratitude for for doing that. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. We've had longer here. Mister Heinz, would it be possible, um I noticed there was that web address uh for people to make an appointment with the company that runs the Friday, Saturday? Is that something that we could share on our social media, or maybe we're already doing that? I don't know.
I would imagine we're already sharing it on our social media, and when our Parks Director Armando Solis comes on for the next item, he can, he can update us on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, with that, I will uh ask more time. We have public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, we'll close the public comment. Do we have any questions from the council for Mister Heinz on this topic? Okay, well, with that, we will move on to
And Mister Mayor, if I may, Director Solis is on the line and and he can respond to whether or not Curative's information has been made public on our social media.
Yes, all that information has been posted on our social media pages and our website.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item H two, the subject is going to be the Walker Park Master Plan. Mister Heinz?
Thank you, Mayor. And so Director Solis will be presenting the Walker Park uh Master Plan to council members. We've uh, we recently went out and had a one of our consultants actually complete the plan for us and bring it to fruition. And and so we have a design that we'd like to show the council. And the the question that I would like to discuss with the council after the presentation, by the way, this project is on our strategic plan, which be which will be coming up in H, I believe, H five. Um, and so the question I have for the council is, um, is there a will uh for the council to for us to move forward to actually bringing this plan to fruition? Uh, the reason I ask is that this plan was developed back in two thousand oh four. It's now twenty twenty two. Your city manager is interested in moving forward with this plan and would look for uh some semblance of concurrence from the county, um sorry, from the council. Uh, because I'd like to move forward with the plan. If the council desires to leave our current efforts the way they are, that's fine, too. I just need some direction. And so I know where to deploy staff's efforts. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Solis, and he's gonna show you the 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 Walker Park Master Plan.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council, Armando Solis, Parks and Rec Director. I just want to make sure everybody can see the screen now. Great. Sorry. Okay, so before we get going talking about our Walker Park uh property, I want to let you know who our neighbors are. Uh, to the northeast, the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District owned that property here. And this is private property, not within the city limits. And I'll be talking about this, these properties later on in the presentation. So last year, the Walker Park uh community uh master plan was adopted, and this is what you see now as our master plan. In phase one, this currently exists. We have a soccer, two soccer fields, a playground, um a artificial turf, a bathroom and a parking area here, and that's currently on site. If some of you have driven by, you've seen some uh construction out there, and this is what we're calling phase two. We are grading the area within the red area and adding a restroom here. We are not building anything. We are only grading this area. But we are paving this roadway that is coming through into Sergeant. This will be paved at the end of this. This is a cost of two point two million dollars, and this has already been paid for uh largely by a grant uh secured by Assemblyman Cooper of one point seven million, and the rest was used with our Quimby uh development funds. So I'm gonna give you two options, option uh phase two, option A and B. Both can be done. Neither has to be done. It doesn't have to be one or the other. So phase two, option A would be to construct the three baseball diamonds that are located here. That would be at a cost of three point one million dollars. We currently have enough money to construct this phase. Uh, but as always, uh how would we fund the maintenance of it? So again, I'm gonna go back to this slide. We're gonna talk about this property here right now. That's the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District's property. So option B would be to build two adult softball fields, three hundred foot on this property. Well, the elephant is in the room is that's the school property, so we would have to get direction from council to enter into negotiations with the school district to use that property. Um, they have expressed interest. We have taken that to their board, and we have spoken to their superintendent about that, so that they are willing to discuss that. So what would that look like? So you see the three hundred foot field, softball field. You'd see a parking lot right in here, restroom, walking sitting area. There'd be a netting here protecting the homes from any uh softball hit that far. So what would it look like in the grand scheme of things? It actually fits pretty well. Looks like it actually belongs on that property. And you know, I really like this conceptual. So now what what is the cost for that? To build those would be four point six million dollars. That does not include any talks that we would have with the school district that is merely to build them on that site. And again, you can do A and B or neither A or B, should you choose to give direction to. Phase three of uh Walker Park is this area. It's the park area. So everything except this uh community center, uh splash pad, uh basketball courts, tennis courts, open area, uh pavilion areas and additional parking would be added into this phase three. That cost is estimated at two point nine million dollars. Phase four, which is the most expensive, would be our community center. And this forty one point three million is estimated to be done in fifteen years. Um, our Public Works Director has indicated that if you decided to do it today, the estimate would be around thirty thousand dollars. So what does it look like? So phase two, this is already paid for the two, excuse me. The two point two million dollars is already paid for. If you choose option A, three point one, option B, four point six. So that'd be a total of seven point seven if you chose these two options here, equally nine point nine total. Phase three, add another ten point nine, phase four, another forty one point three, that is a fifteen year estimate. Total project cost to build out Walker Park would be sixty two million dollars estimated. That kind of goes all the information that we have, and I'm gonna turn that back over to uh the city manager and ask if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Solis. Would you go back to the slide that uh contains the entire concept of the plan? I think it's a there we go. Great, great. So council members, um to build out this entire park to this particular level, as you just saw, will be about sixty two point one million dollars. Now, um, we can break this up into phases. We can um handle it any way that Um we can break this up into phases. We can um handle it any way that. Council directs, but what I'm looking for is again, there's no resolution attached here. I'm just looking for an informal nod that basically says, go ahead and pursue the funding options. Bring us back any long term financing options um. And seek public opinion on these particular uh changes to Walker Park. We're we're ready to move forward, but I want to make sure that my desires and effort are lockstep with council's desire. To complete this park. Again, as I mentioned in the staff report. We are currently working on this three ball fields in the center. The school district property is currently vacant. Uh the properties that are denoted by uh numbers three and four are also currently vacant. And we can leave things the way they are and just. Um carry on the way we've been carrying on. Um all I'm all I'm interested in here is. Hearing the will of council, so I know what to pursue and where to where to put staff's efforts. And so with that, please, um I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Mr. Heinz, would it be possible just for the public to hear and and for us to understand too? Uh Mr. Solis, could you possibly uh? If. Could you maybe, what would be the advantages other than the obvious having, you know, this beautiful park? Say the three ball fields, the uh smaller of the fields, what would be, what would be in a, what would be a benefit of having those? Fields constructed? What would be the benefit to the community uh outside of what people may be thinking already?
So the obvious one is our youth programs, not just the city of Galt, but uh we have several organizations that are buying for field time. Um actually, today I was dealing with that um. They have Galt Youth Baseball, American Made Baseball. We have several other small groups. They need baseball diamonds, and I'm currently having to. Uh depending on if they're competitive recreational. Uh how many kids are in the program? I'm gonna have to cut back one organization over another. Um and um I just don't have enough fields for what our kids need today. Um. You know, uh economic point is that you put in three brand new baseball fields. I could attract even more tournaments here on the weekends, which would help with our T O T tax, our gas tax, our sales tax, those type of items.
And it would also help with park revenues as well. And um and if we're able to, forgive me, Director Solis, if we're able to actually build out the two adult diamonds as well. That would serve that purpose even even greater. So in addition to, and Mayor, you mentioned this, you the overall aesthetics of this park. Um is also a great advantage to the community as well.
Thank you. And and also, there's been some terms. I just want to, you know, the the community that's that happens to be watching, understand. Um there was a reference, you know, to Quimby funds. Just briefly, could you, um I mean, I could say it, but could you just give a brief explanation of what Quimby funds are and what they can and cannot be used for?
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So those are development fees uh issued when uh new new developments go into place. If they're not building parks or providing a buyout basically. To the city. That that money can only be used to develop new park property or facilities. It cannot be used for maintenance. So that's why when if people do ask, why aren't you using that to mow the lawns once a week? We cannot use that money for that.
Thank you, sir. And that's and that's the reason why I want you to explain, because I want to be clear to the public that's watching. As the council discusses this right now and 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 we come up with some sort of direction for Mr. Heinz that we um. It's very clear to the public that we're not looking at building some fancy thing that we could be taking that money and fixing some other park that. Needs something done or maintaining the park in a perfect world. Uh you know, that would be what would be the wise decision, but the funding we would be going after for this and the funding that we have currently. That we could start building, for example, the three smaller fields is not money that could be used for. It's very specific. And so although maintenance, of course, is an issue, and when we consider building new things, we have to be cognizant of how how will we take care of it and and. The council is very cognizant of that, and we are, you know, discussing things to to possibly remedy that as as we go on, but. I just want the people that are watching to to know that that's um these funds are very specific and that we're not gonna be using money that would be. Uh used for something uh else. So uh with that, um does any of the um council want to begin this conversation? Councilor Papanell, go ahead.
Yeah, so while we still have the slides up, can you go back to the one with the numbers? Yeah. Cost. There we go. So I want to make sure I understand it right. Two point two is currently under construction and paid for.
Correct.
Um and if I understood you correctly, the two A, three point one is we actually have that money that could be allocated in that direction at this time. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so. You kind of have to look at uh. What we would be sending you out to do. Um. You know, i- is actually for say to be, you're only looking for the four point six. Um to complete all the way through to be. Cause those other numbers. Are either. Already paid or we do have that money. Is that correct?
Uh we would have to go out for four point six. And uh the ten point nine and the forty one.
The in the, yeah, the ten point nine would take us into to Phase Three.
Yes.
Okay.
We would have to find funding for four point six for Phase Two B.
Okay, all right. So yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that right, that you know, we do actually have um. A little bit of the way already done on that, should we choose to to send you forward on it, so. Um that's all I have right now.
Okay, I'll I'll circle back to everyone to um give ample time to discuss. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, thank you so much uh for the presentation, Mr. Solis, and I appreciate the briefing prior uh to this meeting on on these items. Uh one thing I, one one question I had was um. The ten point nine million, that is just for what is what was shown in the slides, right? That's irrigation. Uh well, but actually moving the dirt, getting it to where you could uh build the two fields, irrigation, uh parking lot, all of that stuff.
So the the ten point nine?
Sorry, fi- uh ten point nine, yes, the the fi- that the, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The everything but the community center. But that does include all of the amenities at below where it says Phase Three.
Yes, and all the numbers that we are using are engineered uh engineering costs. So, you know. If when we go out to bid, could be lower, could be higher.
Right.
Really, depending on what it is, those are the best estimates that we can give you today.
Right. So is that having to move dirt into the uh out of these basin areas and doing all that, or is that? Uh.
I would ask if uh uh Director Selling could.
Yeah.
Come on board and. Help with that question.
Can you repeat the question? Sorry?
So Mr. Selling, my question is, there's um we're we have some plans for some uh basins in here in in Phase Three. Are we to do a lot of moving of dirt to make those um? Acceptable basins?
Well, I I don't know what the grades are. I know part of the area and kind of just maybe slightly above where it's labeled Phase Three. There's already a small detention basin there, so some of that's already excavated. Um but the remainder of it, uh yeah, there's probably a fair amount of dirt that needs to be. Moved. I don't know what the, you know, what the earthwork balance would be, and by that I mean how much we'd have to off haul or how much we could use. You know, around the rest of the site. Um but uh but there's a moderate amount of grading and at least earth movement that would need to occur to construct those basins.
Okay, and and uh my other question is, is that ample parking there that to to take care of all of the facilities needs? Um in your estimation?
Yeah, you know, I I'm not really much of a parking expert. Um I would say, you know, I mean, we could definitely run it by the consultant. Uh I've not really done parking calculations. A lot of times. That um gets done earlier in the planning phases that the the city usually has requirements. I don't know if Mr. Hoffman could uh could provide any further, anything further on that, but um. Uh we could definitely look at it and and determine whether or not it would meet the needs. Some of it too will depend and be a bit seasonal, you know, based on. Weather certainly and seasons of some of the activities, you know, for instance, the um the Splash Park or whatnot, if that were done. So um so there would be some bearing demand uh that would need to be considered at least, so.
I can answer that question on the parking. When we added that this third baseball field and removed the parking. That was looked at and the parking was adjusted for the additional use of this field, so parking was added to that in the update. To accommodate for all the uh amenities on property.
My my only, my only reason for those questions is I just don't want that to. Uh you know, parking to affect um, for instance, Sergeant Avenue, uh where there's not a lot of on street. Ability, right? And and uh certainly, you know, we don't want, a- as much as we can contain it within that, I think it'd be um best. Um so, and I and I like.
Member Lozano, sorry.
Go ahead.
We looked at that through the process. This this site is parked appropriately based upon the facilities are there. If in the future you decide to change, we could take another look at parking, but there isn't onsite parking on on Elmer Sargent. They're just, there can't be. All the parking has to take place onsite, and what we were looking at is realistically what is taking place at the same time. Because if you have a baseball game going on, you have to park that baseball game, but you have to actually park the next teams that are coming on the site as well. So there's overlapping of parking that's taking place, but it's parked appropriately. We made sure that the site worked.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um and then just one last comment. I like the um. The fact that we're thinking about maintain maintenance as well as building and um. You know, those those do oftentimes come from two different funds. Um and so I appreciate that. I would I would just suggest and and uh I know we've had some conversations about this in the past, but. Um. You know, looking at uh potential state and. Uh state grants, uh and some may be coming through the governor's budget here the next cycle um. Uh in terms of uh matching funds and things like that. And so I think, you know, if you. If you had, you're we're spending three point one million, let's just say, uh for Phase A uh A to A. Uh you know, we're not that far off of uh if we had a fifty percent match. Uh or or exact match, honestly, on on that, we're not that far off from Phase Two B. Uh and so anyhow, just some of my thoughts, and I'd certainly like to hear uh if there are any public comment.
One one quick note, uh there is a grant opportunity that just came out uh that we are going to apply for. Um so um it is a fifty percent match, so any funding we could get, we will definitely be applying for some of that.
Yeah, I I that's great, Armando. I think that's awesome. You know, a- again, we're all, we're we're, we have three point one million dollars, whether we spend it on Phase. Uh two A or not, uh it has to be spent for development, and if we could get a matching grant to double our money uh. For what we're doing already, I mean, it, you know, provided there are no significant strings attached that that would make it not worth it, but. Uh yeah, no, that's awesome. Good work.
Yeah, we we checked a lot of the boxes in this new grant coming through, so I'm really excited about it.
Okay, um before I uh call on Councilman Vanderburg, I just want to go ahead and. Let the public know I'm gonna open the public comment period, so if you'd like to raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine on the phone. And uh we will um circle back to you in a moment and call on you for public comment. Uh would you like to speak or would you like to me to see if there's a comment already, Mr. Vanderburg?
Oh, you can check for comment at any time. Thank you.
Hey Tina, is there any comment at this time?
We have one hand raised from Jerry Soder right now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Um I just wanted to kind of put a different perspective on this, and I appreciate our. Desire to improve the the community parks and the work that that has gone into this. Um the only thing that that I kind of is listening to it as a as a member of the public and. Following along on some of the messages that are trying to be delivered to the public is. We're gonna improve a park that's kind of on the outskirts of Galt, and I live on. The east side of town, and so we're kind of getting that that mixed message of. Creating a community with walkability and let's reconfigure our roads to encourage bicycling and and walking and yet. This park is really gonna be accessible. To someone like me via car, so I'm just kind of putting that out there as as. We're we're developing a park that's. That's way out compared to some of our baseball fields that are that are in. Uh the market area where that's more of the center of the community, so again. Appreciate that we're developing this and 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 uh improving a community park and and getting the funds to do that, but. Just in looking at the Google Maps here, that was something that really kind of struck me, so wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Soder, and thank you for your uh for always um. Uh bringing your your insight to questions. I I would want to point out, uh as as you were saying that. I would like to to mention too that he makes a good point. Uh however, I also would like to say that. I think the last major park to be built in Galt was the Galt Community Park, and that's a significant park, probably the largest in town, and that is actually on the east side. So for someone like me who lives on the west side, that's probably the most furthest park away from where I live, so. Unfortunately, our town is logistically separated in half by the freeway and it's just. Uh and this this park, you know, has been in development plans for many, many years. It's just been slow to proceed. Um so I mean. Uh we can't just abandon, you know, the process that we have a lot invested so far, whether we decide to build whatever on this or not. Or or you know, stop where we're at or continue whatever, um it will be built out, just a matter of when, so. But uh but I think you made a very good point, Jerry, so thank you, Mr. Soder, for that.
Mayor, can I add some insight to that, please?
Sure, go ahead.
So when this park was, when the property was built for this park, um. One of the reasons it was put in that area, the city was developing to the west. Um at one point, we stopped, uh we will no longer be going past Sargent. That is also one of the reasons why the school district bought that property. We thought we were gonna develop further west. So things, the course has changed. So it looks like it's at on the outskirts of town when and probably would have been in the middle of the development if we would have kept with our. Our scope at the time. So it it's it's, we weren't looking for property on the outside of the town limits. We thought we were gonna build in that direction at one point.
All right, thank you for that information, Mr. Solis. Um Councilman Vanderburg and then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so that that actually answered one of my questions was, uh you know, what is the direction of growth of the city and uh. Clearly, it's not this direction, at least not for a majority of housing, et cetera. So the school property. What funds would that be purchased with? That cannot be or can be purchased with Quimby funds, and I asked that because I'm curious if. What funds it's purchased with? Uh it it say the parks, the diamonds were not built there, could it be? Um rezoned for commercial or some other use depending on how it's purchased?
It would, we would have to work out those details with the school district. Right now, we're looking to lease the property from the school district, cause I don't know if they're interested in. And um giving up ownership of the property, even though they don't have a use for it. I think for the purposes of that you saw on this plan, uh leasing the property would be a good alternative. Uh as far as rezoning and looking at some of the options that you've mentioned. Uh we'd have to talk to legal about that, and we'd actually probably have to look at actually purchasing the property. I don't know if the school district's open to that. Uh we do know that they're open to leasing. Uh Director Solis, any thoughts?
Yes, we uh we also could do a joint use uh agreement for the property. We currently have two of those in place. We have McCaffrey, the three baseball diamonds next to uh McCaffrey Middle School. That's a joint use agreement with the school district. And the Greer Basin is also a joint use uh property. So we, those aren't unheard of. It's easy to enter into one of those agreements.
So we, those aren't unheard of. It's easy to enter into one of those agreements. Um so that, that is also an option.
And that, and that would be one of the options that we would bring back.
Is that an actual movie or is that just a recap?
Uh, City Clerk, can you, can you, um, thank you. Um and so, lost my train of thought. So Councilman Vandenberg, that would be one of the options that we would bring back to the county. Based on the conversations that we had with the school district. And again, we, we don't have a firm plan in place to bring this to fruition. But before we put the time and effort into developing that plan. That's why I'm looking for some informal head nod from uh the council. Um this is the direction they wanna go and then we will go about developing a plan with various options for your review and approval.
Okay, thank you. So perhaps I misunderstood, but I, I got the impression that uh it was very likely that the school would. Sell that property. I don't get that impression from the statement you just made.
We, we have to have those discussions with them. Our discussions and Director Solis, correct me if I'm wrong. Our discussions, or at least discussions I've had with them, were related to leasing the property, with a long-term lease.
Yes, I don't believe they're um wanting to sell the property at all. Uh my impression is uh they're willing to discuss a lease or a, a use agreement.
How, how long would that lease be?
Depending on what's negotiated at the time.
Okay, I understand that as I was saying it, but I meant, you know, what's a stereotypical, just so we could get a grasp from the public and get a grasp of what.
Oh, I think we would be looking for a twenty to fifty year lease, possibly.
Twenty to fifty.
Don't hold me to it because there's another party that's part of this transaction.
Absolutely, sir, absolutely. Okay, so that answered, answered most of my questions really between Rich and our conversation. And then how long until, if, you know, we selected, how long until uh part B two would start?
Uh that would depend on the funding, when and how we could secure it. Um city manager would come back to you guys with options and then you would decide whether we move forward with the options he provided.
Okay.
And so the purpose of this particular item, Councilmember Vandenberg, is to uh just allow me to start that process.
Yeah, I understand. I just hitting all the bases I can. Thank you.
Understood.
Uh Vice Mayor Sandu, you have a question?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, I have a question, but I think most of my colleagues uh already asked this question. Uh the only, I just a question, uh the phase two. A and B and B phase is four point six million, so four point six million is not including uh the land, right?
No, it is not. It's just the development of the land.
So the land we are talking about is not going to buy, I don't think so. They're going to sell it. And we maybe negotiate the long-term lease or the partnership, right?
Though, though seem to be the best two options.
Okay, and can you might a little bit, if we have a partnership, do we have a partnership before? What kind of uh thing when we're doing a partnership?
So, what, when it comes to both uh Greer and McCaffrey Fields. What we're doing is we're providing the maintenance for it during school hours. That is school property and people are not allowed on that property. That's why when the Greer Basin is closed during school hours and people wanna use it, we say sorry. School property up until uh three o'clock and both with McCaffrey also. So the public cannot use those facilities until uh school is out. Um and are prohibited to be on there when school is in session.
Okay, so on, on this piece of property, if we, for example, we negotiating the partnership. This should be not that because this facility is publicing, can it use? Off school time, there is no school, right?
Correct. Correct. And unless the school district negotiates something like our youth softball. Teams for the schools are practicing during this time, then they would probably get uh prefer uh scheduling over our programs. And that's typically what happens now at the other two facilities.
All right, thank you. And uh the one question, another question, just a suggestion from Mr. Heinz. Mr. Heinz, you know, this is a good report, uh you know, I'm go with that. It's a long-term uh master plan. And you know, when we can go to, for example, on a phase third, what you think? Uh you know, funding has to come somewhere, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you might, you don't know exactly how you get, but what you can try to do and these. Step like one phase two, three or four. Uh are we using any general fund or are we using grant, we try to grant or uh the Quimby fees?
The, the goal is to use um the funding um outside of the general fund. And so what we would be looking for is grant opportunities, very similar to what Director Solis described earlier. Um that, you know, this opportunity that just, that just came to our attention. Uh we'll also be uh talking with our state legislators. Um because just like we were the beneficiaries of a member's request from last year. If you recall, Assemblyman Cooper's office was able to get a seven hundred thousand for the turf field. Um if that call for members' requests is made again, we will have a ready-made list of needs. Um for our state legislator, Assemblyman Cooper, um you know, to propose to his office. Um so we're looking for grants, we're looking for state assistance. Um I will also be talking with some of my friends in the bond markets. And seeing what debt service looks like on long-term financing for these amounts as well. We'll be looking at that debt and yes, that debt will be paid partially by the general fund. But it will also be paid by the fees that we get for the parks. And so the parks, so the, so the revenue structure that we have to set up for this park. Is that revenue not only has to cover maintenance, but it also may have to cover debt service. And so um and those are sort of uh configurations that I want to get into. It takes a great deal of time and um thought. And but before I decided to go down that road and start building these economic models to figure out how we can make this park work. I needed to make sure I was in lockstep with council desires because it is a pretty, it's a pretty detailed process.
Uh thank you, sir. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um so my thought would be, um. I mean, it's already been stated that we're, that we're, we're not, this isn't, this isn't a question of us taking money that we could be better used. Um to do something else in the community versus this, this, this is the, the funding that we have. The three point one in Quimby now has to be used for a specific purpose. Uh the additional funding's not even found yet, um as has been said already. Mr. Heinz would be out searching for grants or searching for finance opportunities. I think for us to uh give the green light to pursue this i- is really just saying, you know, go look. Um uh I think the three point one for the fields we have, I, I think there's an urgent need for the three fields. I think it's in the plan. We've approved it. It's been, uh you know, this has been the vision for some time. I think if we have the money, we build it. Um I, still gonna be a couple of years before we probably even see those three fields, so if we wait much longer, costs could go up. Uh it's another thing that I think people don't realize is if we wait on this stuff, these costs could go up significantly. So if the city manager comes back and says, I'm able to find the four point six or maybe even the. You know, the twelve million for the, for the, for the, that and the, and the next phase, or I'm sorry, the um. The nine point nine, maybe he comes back and says, look, I found this much money. We can then decide if we wanna do it, depending on what the parameters of that money, if it's financed, if it's about whatever it is. We can maybe say, you know what, actually, I think, wanna hold off. We can make those decisions at that time. I think what he's looking for, for us now is just the green light for him. To, you know, proceed with pursuing forward and see what he can find and what he can do for this plan. Um I think we'd be doing ourselves a disservice to say no because there's no hurt in going and looking. And as far as the three point one, spending that money now, I would, I would be in agreement to that. Um I think uh that's what the money's for and it can only be used for certain things, so let's do it. Um as far as of Mr. Sodder's comments and you know, the way the city has grown, unfortunately, I agree. You know, a park like this would have been much better and say the notch property. But the notch wasn't part of the city, you know, years ago and we've already have a lot of invested money in this property. A lot of uh planning invested, a lot of things have been done and to pull the plug and just steer to a different direction. Uh it's just not practical. So for me, I, I, I'm in favor of going forward with two A. And uh pursuing what's out there to move on beyond that and bring that back to council when the funding is found and see what we think.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am.
Uh we do have another public comment.
Yes, I was gonna ask you.
Okay.
Um uh go ahead and let's go to the public comment and then I'll let uh Council Lozano go after that.
Okay, we have a public comment from somebody on the phone.
Okay.
So please state your name. Can you? Unmute yourself.
We can, we can hear you. Go ahead. Caller, can you hear us? I don't know if they're, it's, do you press star nine? Uh and you can.
Yeah, um can you, can you unmute yourself? Oh, he's unmuted. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi. Hi, this is Lindy Stinson. Um I just stepped in. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um I, yes. Okay, I, I just started following this. I was actually in the initial uh conceptual or the. Hello?
We can hear you.
We can, we can hear you just speak.
Hello?
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 Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry. I, hi, I was in the uh two thousand, I was in the two thousand four, two thousand five planning. And so my concern. My concern right now is just, you were talking about the parking. And we were told at the time that there would be permits for the neighborhoods if we did run into that situation where parking became an issue. So that was one uh, one concern of mine, but the other was, I was just kinda, I follow us every now and then. And the uh baseball diamonds uptown, the four diamonds.
Oh, it looks like maybe she got disconnected.
Okay, um.
Do you want me to let you know if she's back on the line?
Please do. If we're watching, uh we'll give you an opportunity to get back on. And uh Tina, just um let me know as soon as she does.
Okay.
Councilman Lozano, uh go ahead.
Yeah, I just, could you go back to the um slide that had the finances on it, Armando? Perfect, thank you. Um I, I would agree with what the mayor said. I mean, there's no, no uh harm in uh looking. Uh into the future to see what we can and finding, finding out there if we can. Uh we certainly don't wanna close any doors uh prematurely. Um I, I would say this, uh in terms of uh my thoughts are that. I believe that uh through phase three is pretty, is going to be pretty um. Easy to, to fund and find funding for over time, not maybe not tomorrow, but, but I think that. You know, it's twenty million, twenty-one million dollars. Um my thought is this, that if phase four, the forty-one million and securing that funding is, is uh becoming uh burdensome. Or I would hate for the rest of the phases to be held up by that. And so my only direction would be, um if we could at least conceptually bifurcate. Uh phase two, two A and two B, obviously, all that and phase three in one group. And then maybe phase four as a secondary. Uh and again, uh if, if, if you're out there and, and uh there's money for it, then let's do it. But I would say, um at least take a look at that in that, from that perspective. Uh you know, community uh buildings and community centers are, are not ever, ever cheap. And I know of a jurisdiction that's just beginning the construction of one after fifteen or twenty years of bare land, so. Uh and you know, and so I, I think that, that, that would be my thought. Uh if you were to have to carve the forty-one million out to get the rest, at least conceptually moving forward and, and funded. Uh I would say that would be appropriate. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And it looks like we have Ms. Stinson back on.
Okay, let her go ahead.
Ms. Stinson, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna mute my computer, cause that's what, not gonna mute. Okay, so anyways, my concern was um the parking, and I know this is down the road, but when I was on the initial uh planning. We were told that residents would get permitted parking only so nobody could be parking in our, in our, front of our homes. And then the other issue or the thought that I had here was the two additional diamonds right there on uh the corner lot you guys are talking about. I understand the need for two more diamonds, but are you guys still getting the one, uh we're talking about? The uh four diamonds downtown, or uptown, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you guys. Let me see if I can.
We can hear you just fine when you were speaking.
Okay, I'm just, I'm watching it on a computer and I'm getting like two different time relate delays here. So is the four diamonds uptown gonna be uh turned into the strip mall? And then we'll be short those four diamonds or are we gonna keep the four diamonds and in addition have these two new ones that you guys are looking to get?
I, I think, uh, can you hear me, ma'am?
I can hear you, yes.
Um I think, not to dive into it too deep, but the future of the ball diamonds uptown are uncertain at this time. Uh we're not sure um if they will be replaced with some kind of development or. If they're not, they're gonna need some, some money put into them at some point too. But again, this money here is not money that could be used for that, so we're not really sure if those four diamonds will exist. In the, in the same proximity with these two and they'll have six total or they won't, that's, we're not really certain at this time.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, it just kinda, to me, it defeats the purpose if we're saying, well, we need two more diamonds because we're short, but yet. You know, I just don't understand why the four uptown can't be um. Whatever you guys have to take, do to take care of it to keep them. So that's where I'm kinda confused. It's like, I don't understand. You wanna get rid of four? But you wanna keep, you know, build two more and which we definitely do need two more. I mean, I have grandkids in the, in sports and there are shortages everywhere. And they're trying to squeeze in, you know, practice time and game time and it's nuts, but I just, you know, I just wanna speak about that too. So when the time comes, I'll follow these meetings, but that's just a thought for now. For people who are listening, it's like. It'd be great if we could keep the four uptown and have two additional here. Well, the third one actually, that you guys are gonna um make the two diamonds. The existing two into three. Now that's awesome. And then the two more you wanna add. That was just, like I said, that's just a thought for now, but um also it was kinda confusing. It was like, why get rid of four and then you say you need two more?
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just be keeping up on these. I mean, I just, uh, I appreciate you guys, what you're doing. I just. I hope more uh public gets involved and you guys, did you say you're gonna open this to the public in another? Um or they don't call in, they can come in person if it's not COVID? If COVID's not blocking the meetings or how, how more, how more can the public find out about this besides just the newsletters and the newspapers? Is there something else you guys can put out there where more people will get involved? the newsletters and the newspapers, is there something else you guys can put out there where more people will get involved?
Mister Mayor, why don't I handle that one, um so we're, we've um, that will be uh a topic to come. This discussion is about the direction to the city manager to move forward with this particular park. Now, when we decide to, when I get my direction, then that action plan will also include public input as well.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I make one point of clarification, there are only three uh ball diamonds um on the sports complex property, there are not four. So I.
Oh, uptown, downtown?
Yeah, there, there are only three diamonds there.
Oh, okay, yeah, oh, funny, as much as I go, you think I'd know how to count those. Okay, thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Bye bye, you too.
Do we have any other public comment, Tina?
No public comment, I did get notice from in the back though, that um to make it easier, if someone's watching us online to go ahead and mute it if they're going to speak through the phone, that will help out a little bit.
Okay, okay, Mister Vanderburg, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, uh I'd like to hear from other council members, but personally, you know, I think uh four should be put on deep back burner or not done. I'd like to see uh phase two A done and the next phase three done, and then either skip or switch places uh to B, switch places with three, or uh drop altogether because we don't know what's going to happen with that property yet. So we're making plans on unsure ground, so I would prefer to see can finish what we're doing, phase two and then phase three. Uh and then the ball fields could still be done if, if the land is taken care of, but that gives us plenty of work to do uh with a known value, known quantity, known direction.
Thank you, council member. Uh I can't see all of you, so um does uh, I cannot see Kevin or Rich, so if either of you have a comment, uh Mister Captain, I'll go ahead, now I can see you.
Yeah, so um just kinda to to round it out, um I am fully in favor of uh requesting the city manager and staff to move forward with seeking the funding moving through and kinda to council member Vandenberg's uh point. Um you know, from prior experience, the school district, they're in a a little bit of an odd situation to work from because um they're if they were wanna dispose of land, like sell it, um there's some restrictions on that because of the way land is obtained with the state, so a joint use agreement, a lease, things like that would would be acceptable. It could be worked on and, and you know, those, that can be worked on at the same time as grant funding is is sought for the other phases and, you know, that, of course, when the time comes, we can kinda work on the, the different order of them. Um and another, I believe from our uh meetings uh prior to this, the phase four, I believe that funding is based on a fifteen year uh plan, so it has a, the funding acceleration and based on the cost going up and stuff, so you know, I think certainly moving forward right now um is fine. And, you know, as we know, things may, you know, as they develop, that there's not housing all around this park. Uh things may develop that uh, you know, a community center is not the, the biggest need for our city in that area and that particular part of the project, you know, could be changed, then we certainly have that option, so you know, I'm uh, you know, fully in favor of getting moving forward, knowing that there will be some, some flexibility and some uh, you know, requirements, uh things, you know, change a little bit as we get down to the the actual implementation.
I I would, I would agree with that completely and with, with Mister Vanderberg about phase four, I I I don't think it's a high priority, but I honestly don't think it's something that's gonna even be on the plate for a long time, um but again, I think as he found, finds funding, you know, he'll let us know. Uh if he's able to find the sixty million dollars somewhere and comes back and says we could do the whole thing, then I guess the council at that time can decide whether or not the community center is something we want, it's not a big priority to me either, I I would like to just proceed forward with two A, two B and, and uh to what Jay said about the negotiations, I think there's no harm in you know, sitting down at the table with the school district while we're looking for funding. Maybe the agreement the school district is willing to put together with us is just not favorable to us, it would not be feasible, and maybe we, we just walk away from that even if we find the funding and we don't, we don't do two B, maybe we just uh move on to to phase three. But I think um just giving the city manager the green light to sit down and start having that discussion and see what that looks like I think is, is okay with me and uh to look for the funding for, for, for whatever we can, so that's that's kinda my feeling on it.
All right, Mister Mayor, I think I have my direction, and so um I, I appreciate it and thank you all.
Okay, do we have any uh last public comment, Tina, before um we wrap on this particular item?
No public comment.
Mister Vanderberg, you still have your hand up, and you have a comment, or?
Yes, because of the past and, you know, things always haven't as clear in our mind as other people's mind, um we politely asked the city manager if he could reiterate back to us what he feels we have directed him.
Well, you've directed me to complete um the current efforts that are in play, you've directed me to complete two A. Um you've directed me to with two B, it's okay to seek funding, but that is still subject to negotiation and council direction, as all of this is. And also, you've directed me to see if I could seek funding for phase three. Phase four can be held off at that time, however, if you're hit with a proposal that's sort of a windfall, feel free to bring that back. And uh council will decide what the direction will be. Also, going forward as we present these plans, they are to have a great element of public input and flexibility regarding their configuration.
Is that sufficient here, like this, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, it is to me, everybody else, do you also? Excellent.
Okay. And it's on tape, so it's always there for our reference.
All right. Uh no further public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. Then we will move on to our next item, which is going to be item H three, Galt Market Visionary Plan, Mister Heinz.
So uh Director Hoffman will be presenting this item. And so this, so the Walker, the Galt Market Visionary Plan has been a project of mine and the staff's for the past year since I've been with you, however, this project has been being pursued by the city since we received the initial grant funding, which count, which uh Director Hoffman will explain, but we received grant funding for this effort back in twenty seventeen. So this has been sitting with the city for almost five years. And so what we did with the visioning plan or the visioning effort was to go through and complete the public input effort. And uh Director Hoffman, you can, you can hold off and just, just sit there on that slide. But what we wanted to do was complete the public input effort and get this report back to the California Energy Commission. Now, the initial requirements for this grant required that the council sanction or approve of the plan going back to the C E C. The C E C has since relaxed that requirement, and basically a plan can be submitted and it does not have to be approved or endorsed or even liked by council. Um but they need a plan so that we can fulfill the, the uh terms of the grant. And so what you're going to see here in this slide is, and this presentation is a rediscussion of the, the process, what we did to get public input. We're gonna show you a revised visionary plan for the Galt Market. Um so you have a sense of what we're turning into the C E C. And then the question I will ask the council after it's all said and done, now that we've fulfilled the requirements of this grant. Is there a desire for council to direct me to go forth and come up with some version of a redevelopment or rejuvenation plan for the Galt Market? And if we're happy with the way things are, that's fine. But if council wants me to move forward, hey, there's some elements of this visionary plan that we like, there's some elements that we don't like. And so we'd like to have a discussion about that going forward. Then I can do that and set up workshops, public uh forums, and we can have more discussion about the Galt Market. Now, the difference between the visionary plan is again, that was grant driven, a lot of public input. And the effort that we're putting forth now is the effort that we're putting forth going into the future will go toward building an actual implementation plan. And so that's why I suggest going forward will include a lot of council workshops, a lot of public input. And this is where we roll up our sleeves and figure this out. And so with that being said, um I'm gonna let uh Director Hoffman go through and um and do the presentation, but the good news is um you know, we just have to turn a plan in, and we're, and I think you'll like the plan that's there, again, it reflects a great deal of public input that we've garnered over the past year and a half. Director Hoffman?
Sure, thank you, uh Mayor, members of the council, we have been sitting on this grant since two thousand seventeen, so we've been able to finish a number of projects within the city, our climate action plan, that was a big deal. Uh the Corrigan Corridor Plan gave an opportunity to see a, a road in a different manner, as well as this uh Galt Visioning Document as well. So, and I hope everyone could see the screen. Um back in two thousand nineteen, the city began a conceptual effort with the community, at that point in time, there were more discussions, we didn't actually have a the, a, a document to look at, more of a, a plan to offer comments on. And so in uh late two thousand nineteen, this, this began, this effort. And originally, presentations were made to our various commissions in committees, the chamber, uh the Galt School Board, as well as in March twenty twenty, we had a, a public forum and it was attended by roughly fifty citizens, so you have this process started. And unfortunately, we all know what happened in March twenty twenty. You basically had uh COVID begin, and it really changed what public processes look like. Uh what our opportunities to interact with people were, and so the original uh C E C grant had an end date of July first, twenty twenty one. And we started working at the end of twenty twenty on trying to put together a plan that we could present to the, to the council, to the commission. And we were essentially notified in February of twenty twenty one, oh, you need to spend all this money in a matter of two months. And it just completely changed the nature of what this effort was, instead of being more of a longer term planning effort, it was more of a a visioning effort, you know, uh an opportunity to, to try to get people uh starting a dialogue, getting an idea of what this area may look like. And so a concept was put together, this shows the uh the plan that was originally presented to the community in late March, early April falling into uh June and July, an overall area concept for what this area could look like in, in twenty or forty years. There's some, kinda some aerial flyovers of what that area could look like with that plan. And so in April, the council told staff, you know, yeah we're under the guides of, of COVID, you can't have necessarily public gatherings, but to make this process as public as you possibly can. And this presentation was given well over forty times, you have a list of different organizations uh within your staff report, as well as with this slide, community groups, all your various commissions and boards. If there was somebody that wanted a presentation, it was given to that group. And if they had follow-up questions, we did one-on-one meetings, but there was well over forty meetings, and if you don't and Lorenzo would probably say it was probably closer towards sixty because he gave them, um. But anyone who wanted this presentation, we gave it. It was a very public process in that I thought we reached out to anyone who could possibly wanna see this thing. And one thing I would say is, we got a lot of feedback, it, it's it was a true visiting exercise, there were a lot of comments and you know, there were comments that were focused on the effort, and there were comments that were kind of on a tangent. We learned a lot about this community, we learned about what's important, what's not, priorities, amenities that are important. Amenities that are driven by this market area, as well as maybe amenities that have to do with parks and rec or finances. So we learned a lot about what the community wants, what it doesn't want, in different priorities. Based upon those comments, you know, there was a discussion about the types of housing that may be included in this area, and this is a a, a January document. Um, you know, definitely, we heard from folks that the project needs to connect to the city and the community. Uh there should be a highest and best use for this area. Um improvement should be used to help pay for the Galt Market and some recreational facilities and programs. Uh you know, definitely, any housing that was included in this area should be special. It should be housing that is not currently being provided in the community. Um some type of higher density or, or senior housing. Uh we definitely heard, you know, not as much single family housing, there is some single family in this plan, but it's on the fair site, school site, and whatever the school would wanna do, that, that's up to them. There were a lot of comments about parking, making sure that there was adequate parking, this site plan does include over a thousand parking spaces. Um but it was a very interactive uh process, and like, say, we heard a lot from the community, what they, what they were looking for. Oh, here, wait a second, I think I just skipped a, skipped a slide. Okay, and so again, it was a visioning process, it, it wasn't a planning activity. It was an activity that was meant to generate dialogue, you know, again, what could this area look like twenty or forty years? It was a chance for the community to think about the past, the present, the future of this area. Uh again, lots of dialogue about current market operations, community fin- finances. Discussions about what amenities would be included at Walker Park and what recreational facilities were important to the community. And as far as the visioning process, it generated a lot of community discussion, I've heard from folks saying, oh, maybe this wasn't the best effort. Any effort in which you can gre- gather people together in that effort includes dialogue about what's best for the community, that's not a bad effort. And so as far as a visioning exercise, I thought it was very successful. And we heard a lot, it's driven a lot of the discussions you've heard tonight. And is on the agenda, discussions about Walker Market, Market or the Walker uh Park. Uh the Galt Market operations that you'll hear after this, as well as items that are within your strategic plan. So there was definitely a, a lot of discussions tonight. This more, again, a, a further discussion. The COVID changed how the Energy Commission looked at this grant, and essentially, the grant's done. We've got kind of a modified land plan, we're gonna tell them how we uh took this on, on the road, provided a, a discussion to the community, but the effort is complete at this point in time from a visioning exercise. And I think we were able to accomplish what we needed to, and next steps. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to our city manager to discuss what he's hoping to to get from you from the next step opportunity.
And so as, as Director Hoffman mentioned, um we've given anywhere between forty and sixty presentations, or should I say, I've given anywhere between forty and sixty presentations of this Galt, of this Galt Market Visionary Plan, um as directed by council back in April twenty twenty one. The thing that I have reiterated time and time again is this is not a planning document. And I think once everyone sort of settled down and understood, this is not a planning document. This is just a visionary document. Then the imagination started to open up and we started to have some really good dialogue. Uh, there's some organizations that I just wanted to call out and to thank them immensely for their feedback. Uh, because it helped shape the plan that transformed the plan that we saw back in April. To the plan that is, is that we intend to submit to the C E C, basically tomorrow. And the first group is the Youth Commission, um, because they were very helpful in helping us understand the need for housing. Uh, especially for the younger folks coming up. The Commission on Aging, very helpful in understanding the, the fact that there is a need for. Senior housing here in Galt. Um, the Galt Lions, outstanding, gave us great feedback. And I, and I am so appreciative of my time with them, so hats off to the Lions. Um, the Planning Commission, very instrumental in helping us understand the value of like. Parking was the big discussion that we had with them and we knew we had to address that, so I appreciate that. The Historical Society, another good group with very good um, suggestions. And also, um, the Board of Directors for the Community Services District, uh, Consumers Community Services District. Very good group, had a good discussion with them, even though they're outside of Galt. Um, it was interesting to hip, get their perception of this, this visioning document. So I wanted to just, we, we, again, we spoke with a number of folks. Uh, those are the presentations that tend to stick out in my mind. And so, we wanted to show the public how this process ended. And bookend it and show everybody, okay, here's the result of the public input. And so the next question that I have here is regarding where do we go from here? Is there an interest in coming up with some level of implementation plan for the future of the Galt Market? And there is, I mean, it's, it's, and I, I just need to know if I should start putting my energies into that. Or to leave the, the effort right at the visioning level and turn this into the C E C? And let's just hold for now. And so that's the direction I'm looking for council. Looking for from council and would love to just have your feedback and comments.
Okay, sorry, I was on mute. Um, I will, um, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment. Um, so if someone has a comment, you can uh, raise your hand online or raise your hand on Zoom and we will call on you as uh. And I'll, then I'll go ahead and go to the council for comments. Does anybody on the council wanna, wanna pipe in first on this? Uh, Councilman Vandenberg, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would just like to start by saying, you know, this, what's that, Chabola Avenue and everything. West is either private and or owned by the school, so. As we're looking at this document, you know, we're gonna have some of the same problems. Uh, we discussed previously about Walker Park and school owned property, as well as uh. What's the last street by uh, the church and Dutch Brothers uh, East? That's also private property, so when you're looking at the document, it's, you can't really say that you can approve that when. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that land, it has not been purchased, correct?
That is correct. Uh, Councilmember Vandenberg, and that's the beauty of this visionary plan and that it exists as a vision. And it is not a planning document and we don't have to worry about things like, um. You know, negotiating with the other property owners. However, if that becomes part of council's vision going forward, then we will enter into discussions with those property owners. Um, should the council desire it, but for this particular plan. I understand your concerns, but for this particular plan, no. Um, going forward with an implementation plan, yes, sir. You, you, you're spot on.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that as this discussion started, you know?
Okay, uh, any other council member have a comment? Do we have any public comments here?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll uh, keep calling for public comments as we go through this. Uh, Councilman Fabinho, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I do. Um, so, you know, start with saying that uh, we all, I think. On this council and generally throughout the community agree that something needs to be done. Um, and that we have a tremendous potential in this property that we own. And I think that we're going, you know, if we sit still, we're going backwards. Um, and, you know, as has been stated, this is, this is a visionary plan. I was at the uh, March twenty twenty meeting and I see in this plan. Uh, a ton of stuff that was on those sticky notes that everybody was putting up for their ideas, along with. Um, a lot of what I've heard from uh, people, you know, over the years of. What we want in our community, how come we don't have this in our city? And I see a lot of that reflected in this plan. And I think that, you know, we have the opportunity to, to move forward and start trying to work through this. And it's, you know, it's changed in the forty to sixty presentations that city manager has done. And I have no doubt that it'll continue to, to change as we get further into, you know, input. And, and finding out the specifics of, you know, what people want and what'll work, so. Um, I would hate to say, let's just park this idea and, and sit and do nothing. I think we need to uh, continue moving forward and, you know, working toward uh, refining this. And toward, um, you know, whatever type of impl- implementation that we can. That's kind of my uh, my opening thoughts about this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, uh, this, the city manager is kind of looking for. I mean, he needs to hear from all of us because he needs, looking for direction on what we should do, um. I guess I can weigh in a little bit on this, um. You know, I've been, obviously been following this thing long before I was on council, um. This is a, you know, this is a really big deal, um, for the community. Um, I know this is a visioning plan and. And uh, maybe some of this or none of this uh, comes to fruition for ten years or twenty years and we don't know. Um, as I've watched this come along, I've um, been a part of many of those meetings and those presentations. And I've seen this thing kind of evolve a little bit, um, some of the changes that have happened to it. I, I think, for me, there's a lot of legacy here with this property and there's a lot of history and, um. That stuff that I don't take lightly, things like the Assembly Bill. Um, obviously, to do some of these things on this property, that would have, some of the legislation would have to be changed. Um, those are things that uh, are, are, are big steps to take and shouldn't be, shouldn't be taken lightly. Um, there's a reason those things are in place. With that being said, I also um, acknowledge that there's a feeling that this property isn't uh, being used to its best potential. And I think um, in some respects, that could be true. There's some derelict properties within this area. I think that uh, need, needs some use badly. Um, what I don't feel though, I don't feel that this plan right now is, is going to solve our immediate problems right now. I think that the other things councilor is moving on right now and working on are actually uh, gonna, gonna. Be solutions that could solve our problems that be. Um, this to me is something that if it were to come for, to fruition, would be too late to solve those things. Anyway, so I don't really put it as, as a solution uh, to those. I, I, I look at it through a different, through a different perspective. Um, but uh, I do like some of the plan. Uh, I'll be straightforward and say there's some of it I'm still not quite a fan of. I'm very reluctant about some of the housing. I don't know if housing on this property is what the community really wants. I don't. I don't uh, disagree with the fact that the community needs some certain type of housing. I just don't know that the market property and what the legacy of this property was intended to be is that. But that's just my opinion personally. Um, would I be open to, you know? Pla- uh, planning or uh, um, workshops to, you know, take this from where it's at to a planning document? Um, I'm not gonna, I would not say I'm against that. Um. I, I, I'm always open minded and, and to see where a discussion would take, um. But with that said, is it a priority for me for this coming year? I would say no. I, I feel like we have a lot of other things that are more important. I feel like I, I appreciate all the time that's been put on this and I think if, you know. Uh, next year or maybe following council wants to move forward with this and really roll up your sleeves, then that would be great. Um, if this council chooses to do that and move forward with um, some workshops. And it's the will of the majority of us, then I guess, um, that's what'll happen, but for me, it's not a priority at this time. Um, but again, we're a five board majority, so that's what I'd like to say at this point. Anybody else like to comment? Do we have any public comment, Tina?
Sorry, I was on mute. No public to- comment at this time.
Okay, um, looks like I have a hand up from Councilwoman Lozano. I will start with him. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I, I, you know, I would say this, I, I think that the uh, first one, thanks staff and, and. And my colleagues for the amount of work that went into this of the last, really last two years, but certainly in the last year. Uh, with the presentations into the community and. I do, I was able to be a part of some of those as well and, and, and I think they, I think that we got uh, good information. Uh, from the community on, on what we could do differently, uh, not necessarily just at the market. Uh, property, but, but certainly as a whole. And uh, and some of that synergy and excitement, uh, certainly from. Uh, some of the, the groups that the city manager mentioned, uh, I would hate to see just die off. Uh, because I think that, um, you know, there, there, we could get. Uh, some good stuff going for the city. Uh, and again, is it gonna solve the issue of the declining market revenues that we've had over the last fifteen years? I would submit absolutely not, um, but. Not, not pursuing anything either, uh, is just, um. I think going to continue to kick the can down the road for, for others to figure out. One thing that I've learned being on this council last several years is that. Um, there's a lot of that going on and a lot of, of things that I, I, I find myself saying, well. Man, I wish they would have tackled this back then. Um, it would have been a much easier issue to deal with today, but, but that, that hasn't been the case. Those aren't the cards we dealt with, so. Um, I like the plan. Uh, there are some things in it that, that I'm not real, real big on, but. Um, but I certainly uh, don't, would, would hate to, to discount uh, the input that has been received. And, and uh, and not pursue it any further. And so I think uh, more formally pursuing uh, and not just shelving this plan is, would be my druthers. Um, and again, uh, you know, we can't control uh, the properties that are outside of the city, but. City properties, but I, I would, I would submit that. If things are beginning to happen on those properties, the other property owners may take notice. And, and may want to do something different with their property as well, so, um. You know, it's just, it's, it's about partnerships with, with the community, uh, certainly the businesses. Uh, in that community and seeing what, what is available out there. Um, and so, uh, my direction would be to at least begin to open up some of those, um. That dialogue to see where we can do or how we can do workshops to get more public input. Uh, maybe uh, breaking it out in phases, um. Uh, so that it's a little, a little less of a large elephant to eat. Uh, maybe we could just eat the snout first and uh, talk about what it's gonna require to, to fund some of this stuff and. And uh, and again, I, I'm, I'm with the mayor in, in some respect that the housing. Um, at least from my perspective, would have to, have to have a little bit more, um. You throw it through the meat grinder a couple more times to see we get a good sausage out of it. Uh, I'm not necessarily opposed to housing uh, altogether, uh, but I think that it uh, that uh. And it has, you know, I, 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 the first plan I saw is much different in terms of uh, housing than it is today, so. Um. I think that's all I have. Those are all, all the notes that I had. Uh, I appreciate the time and energy and uh, that everyone's put in, not only the city manager, but. But everyone that's put in, into this and I would say ship it off to the C E C and. So thank you for their money and we appreciate it and uh, and then uh, move forward. So, thank you.
All right, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Lozano. I didn't realize I was muted still. Um, Vice Mayor, you had your hand up. Did you no longer want to speak?
Uh, no, I, I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, Steph. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. The effort he makes with the community, uh, that's a visionary report and uh. It's same thing, I'm agree with everybody else, uh, you know, especially with the mayor, uh, we should not be have. You know, that prioritize, this is, is kind of long term, forty year plan. If we can do the next year, it's not gonna be that much of a problem. Uh, the, my other thing is on this plan, that's my personal opinion. Uh, I does not wanna see the sports complex uh, going out from that place. Uh, there may be some reason because we know we building a Walker Park, but this is a middle and heart of the city. And you know, when parents or everybody came, they have a lot of foods very close to that. Everything else will be a very uh, close to the players and their parents. Uh, that's why I, I like to, the other thing is same thing everybody else concerned about the house. Yes, we say we need that apartment complexes, but certainly there is some other, other private uh. Uh, developer, they're gonna come to ask, uh, they, they need apartment complex. So in, in the housing, if you, if we look at a short of housing, it's not in this city, all in California, short of houses. So the housing on that area, I'm, I'm not that much fan on that. There is a couple of things, yes, I does not wanna be totally complete. But if there is a option, if there is a future option, come with a modified plan. And there's a couple things could do a different couple options we had, I certainly would like to consider. But uh, as, as is visionary code, I, I'm not fan of to take more of the sports complex. And the housing on that area. And I certainly understand, uh, on the flea market, this is forty five acre. We are not using properly. We have to use as a business, is a private business or the government, we have to use. The property so we can have more rent. That's why, uh, this, the same thing we came up because we needed more revenue. To this city, so we have a healthy general fund. I totally understand, but on the visionary, we have to do modify. Or have to come back uh, this year or next year, whatever, be modified. Thank you, that's my comment so far.
Excuse me, thank you, sir. Um, do we have any public comment? Tina?
No public comment.
Okay, Councilman Vandenberg.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I just run through it real quick, so. Correct me if I'm wrong, if housing were to be built and there would, would be a need for street repairs. That money could not come out of uh, general fund. That would also have to be because of A B three seven seven three. That money would also have to come out of monies generated from the property or Parks and Rec funding, correct?
Uh, council member, I'm not aware. I don't have an answer for you. That would be the details that we would bring back to council. Should council decide to uh, schedule workshops on this particular issue?
Thank you. That's just something to keep in mind, I guess, then. Uh. I'm not a fan of the housing all around, to be honest. I'm concerned. Uh, if it's low income housing up, there's anything wrong with that, but those are generally not people with disposable incomes. To feed restaurants and the like. Uh, I also concerned that the state may mandate us requiring it to be homeless housing or something like.
Also concerned that the state may mandate us requiring it to be homeless housing or something like that, and they will destroy it. Uh. I I'm not a fan of the baseball diamonds moving. I I would like to see the city aggressively. Uh, look for a federal grant for a parking garage. It's a constant problem. I I think it would help free up property. If we could consolidate parking and three, four story parking garage. I know that's a long term process. I think the city should start immediately looking for a federal grant, uh, and I'd like to see that. Uh, next to City Hall, actually towards the the dental office, that's a nice sized lot. I think the bigger, the better, where it's already a parking lot. I don't think you would lose anything as far as uh function as it is presently. Uh, I believe we should try and, uh, I think it is a priority to generate cash ASAP and. Sections of property that is um over by Cafe Latte, it used to be the youth center. And now it's a cement lot. If that could be developed in kind of some kind of retail, that's something that could help produce uh income upfront. Without affecting the property as well. Long term, you know, the market doesn't really have a storefront. It's a market surrounded by parking lots. I I think uh in a marketing sense, that should change. And I also, we don't know what's gonna happen in the market in the long run. I would like to see the start of or continuing of uh building properties. Building retail around the perimeter of the market. Then the market could stay as it is and double as parking lot for the retail around the perimeter of the property. Uh, I think those are things that could be done without great disruption while generating income for the city. I think I'll stop right there. Thank you.
All right, I so I'm I just unclear, Jay, I know you just expressed a lot of opinions on uh. You, your view of the property and what it should it shouldn't be. But I think um we need as a council, just need the five of us need to. Figure out how we feel about what he's asking us for right now. What he's asking us for right now is. It's pretty straightforward. Do we as a majority, is there is a majority of us want to move forward with um. Workshops and continued discussion to make this plan, some sort of planning document, some make changes to it, whatever. Or do we want to pause this at the moment? I think that's really what we're looking for right now. He's looking for the direction on that.
Yeah, I I understand. It's also, you know, one of the rare times that we get to discuss all of this in a public setting without breaking the brown act or anything like that. So I like to stay well, while I get the opportunity. As far as satisfying, uh, you know, clearing this hurdle, we're not pinning our name to anything, so. Why not?
Okay. So, correct, okay, let's look.
So, do you wanna clarify, Mr. Vanderburg? I'm not, I think we're unclear.
I'm I'm okay with the document. I mean, I I wouldn't vote to um. Proceed with this plan, but you know, we're trying to clear a hurdle here, correct?
Right, and so what I'm asking you is next steps. Do we wanna go forward and have workshops and discussions about actually the details that you just mentioned? Um, in a workshop format and engage all five council members moving forward in the development of an implementation plan. Um, that can take the form that council wants it to take, or do you want me to stop right now?
No, we cannot stop. We, to me, it's a priority. It's it should have been done thirteen years ago, twenty years ago.
Okay, so that's what I'm hearing three of you, three of you say.
Yeah, to, and to kind of clarify, you know, sum up, you know, what I said earlier, I. Um. I do think we need to keep moving forward, um, and obviously. We're going to have hurdles that come with trying to develop this and there's. You know, things that people don't like or wish would change, and we can, we can talk about that going through the process. But um, one thing I'm really fearful of. Is not having some sort of master plan. It's gonna take a lot of work to refine this to something that's acceptable to everybody. But uh piecemeal approach of throwing, you know, one thing here and one thing there throughout this property um. Is a disaster waiting to happen, so I do think we need to to keep working toward. Something that's gonna be a a comprehensive plan so that everything's gonna work together. Um. And I'll always go back to try and drive from Rayleigh's to East Stockton. Through that gauntlet, it's a piecemeal um chaos of driveways all crashing into each other. Um, and we could create that on steroids if we don't have some sort of. Cohesive master plan to move forward with. So I would, you know, I hate to see us stop. I'd like to see us move forward, but. Um, certainly knowing that there's gonna be a whole lot of uh, a whole lot of tweaking and changing along the way.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing is that proceeding with workshops. Uh, during this calendar slash fiscal year is okay. I understand that your and Vice Mayor Sandu's um opinions are. That this is not a priority right now, and so I'm gonna try to meet everyone halfway. And that we schedule, start to schedule these workshops, council workshops. And public workshops after we get the budget put away and and at the end of June or July. And so that way we can focus on budget and then come back and start working on the Galt Market Plan. How does everyone feel about that, or do you want me to start scheduling them earlier? Or because right now I'm hearing that the will is. We wanna continue talking about this. Is July an appropriate timeframe to start? Start this up again, or would you like me to start it in March or April or give me your thoughts?
Well, I I I'm, since I'm on the descending side of this feeling, and I do respect the will of the majority of the council to move forward workshops, and so I. Obviously, that's uh the will of the council, and so that's what we're gonna do. Uh, as far as the timing of that, I'll let the three that um want to do that uh. Go in with when they would like to start. I'm fine with waiting till after the budget, but again, I. I've already expressed my opinion on, so I'll let them weigh in on that. Mr. Lozano.
You know, um, I I I think, and and again, this is just my perspective, but I think that the best. Judgment of workload for the staff and and for the city is the city manager, so I would, I would certainly defer to his best judgment on that. Uh, I don't have any heartburn of of doing it tomorrow, uh, uh, or not doing it tomorrow. Um. So whatever, whatever's gonna work. I know we've, I know we've put some things off this last several months. Uh, that that we may have been able to tackle before um in terms of the schedule, so. Uh, you know, I don't want this to go on for too much longer without at least addressing some of these things, but. But I'll I'll certainly um defer to the city manager in terms of workload and and uh appropriate timing.
Councilman Pappanow?
Yeah, I I would agree with that, and I mean, I do, it's not lost on me that in our last item we discussed, we handed him another project to go forward with. That I think is a much uh more near term uh project than this uh. You know, twenty year plan, so um, you know, I'm I'm also fine with. Uh, as he determines the the priorities move forward and, you know, as he suggested. July, that that would be uh, that would be fine with me. It's a, it's, I'm a good with his call.
Okay, well, it looks like Mr. Heinz is gonna be at your discretion, so.
That also, and I've just wanted to say this, it also gives us time that hopefully this pandemic. Will blow over, and I'm just crossing my fingers here, that we can actually meet in person. That we can actually hold some town hall meetings and get the public's uh sort of live opinion on this. Although we've done these forty to sixty presentations, it would be great to. Have this conversation with the public in person. Um, I can say that the document that you see before you. Reflects the public's, or at least those sixty folks that we talked to, reflects their thoughts. And 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 not sixty folks, but sixty organizations and individuals. It reflects their thoughts, so um. I just wanted you all to know that, so as we start. I'm gonna put this plan in front of you because as far as we're concerned, we being the staff, this is what the public told us they wanted. And then we can start from there. Okay, so I wanted you all to know that because I know public input is very important to the five of you. Um, as it is to the staff, um, but I thank you uh for the direction tonight and um. Depending on how budget goes, and I intend for our budget process to be transparent and smoother than you've seen in the past, we may be able to start in May. Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and council members, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, no public comment? Tina?
No public comment.
All right. All right, we're gonna move on to item H four, which is the subject is going to be the weekend market, Mr. Heinz.
And so last fall, we had a discussion, I believe it was in October, um, um. How was it November? I believe it was November that we had a discussion about what to do in the near term. For the Galt Market, and as as we mentioned in the last item, the Galt Market visionary plan is about. What the market will look like in twenty or so years. We still have issues. An economic issue to deal with in the current area, uh, the current timeframe. Um, in that we have to figure out a way to flatten out that declining revenue curve for the market. The market is still generating a profit. So I wanna make sure that's clear. The market is still generating a profit. However, that profit is shrinking. And so we wanna get ahead of the curve and keep that, keep that curve flat or go have it go the other way. But I wanted to reiterate that for the public watching. It is, we are not losing money. It is still generating a profit. And so Director Solis is gonna come on and give you staff's recommendation on. How we address the near term issue, and we look forward to hearing your comments and suggestions. Uh, and any modifications um to this plan. Uh, Director Solis?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, our modest least partial rec director again. Feel like this focus has been on uh Parks and Rec all night, so I'll try and do my best on this one. So on April sixth of two thousand twenty-one, City Council directed staff to return with information regarding expanding the Galt Market hours of operations. To include weekends. At the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting. Um, the feasibility study was presented to City Council. It was discussed, but council did not wanna make a decision at the time without a full council present. So tonight, we bring back um our recommendation. Um, at during during the recommendation at the September twenty-first, uh, staff reports, staff suggested that Parks and Rec staff. Uh, implement a pilot program. So this is that pilot program that we were talking about. So before we get to. This, I wanna talk about how we got to there. So that property between thirty-seven and fifty-four was the mark, the Sacramento County Fairgrounds. In the sixties, that property turned into dumping grounds. In seventy-one, our council had the vision to upgrade that property and build a uh a true fairgrounds and market. As with some, as you saw with the Walker Master Plan, things change and you can kind of see what. Now became the Galt Market property with the baseball field, City Hall, and the market grounds. So in the early eighties, this is what you saw. They started the baseball fields. It went from that one field to three. You still see the the market property as dirt. And when I tell people I'm as old as dirt, is this is when I started working here. I actually worked up this property on this dirt. And uh, it was a, it was a really different time. But as we transform in the into twenty twenty-two, at the height of the market, you can see what it became. And. What this is to show you is that this didn't start like this overnight. We had to grow into that. And that was this transformation. So the pilot program we're about to present to you. Um, is gonna be a Saturday market. And I'm gonna ask our uh special events manager Jackie Garcia to come on and to uh present this to you.
Okay, give me just a moment here. Okay, Jackie, you should be good.
If you're talking, Jackie, you're you're muted.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Mondo, for the introduction. I'm excited to present on a proposed seasonal event that has been directed. That is the direct result of City Council's request to provide the City of Galt residents with the Weekend Market option. For over fifty years, we have offered weekday market shopping at the Galt Market, and in twenty twenty, we added on a Friday night market event during the summer months. And now in twenty twenty-two, we wanna increase the farmer's market artisan-inspired shopping experience by adding a weekend evening event, the Saturday market. Next slide. Modeled after our popular Friday night farmer's market and harvest event, Saturday market will continue to exemplify the City of Galt's vision statement. To be a premier family-oriented community united to create a unique city with diverse shopping, dining, entertainment, and employment opportunities. Within a small town atmosphere. In addition to Galt's vision statement, the newly proposed Saturday market would also promote healthy living. Create food accessible by all people of every social economic status. Foster a sense of community and support local vendors in an increased way. Next slide. Not only have we thought out the plan for how the market would operate, we also are proposing the branding for this new weekend event. As you can see, the image is kept simple and clear and easily understood by visual appearance. Next slide. The idea is to keep the running icon throughout all creative materials and intermixed taglines that we feel the Saturday market will be known for. Such as local artisan vendors, local farmers shopping, general shopping experience, live music. Family-friendly atmosphere, central Galt event location, community sponsorship with the wide variety of organization types. Such as chamber member store supports, sponsors, and retail stores. Next slide. We also thought ahead to begin theming our Saturday market to monthly themes tied to celebrating known holidays and topics of interest for our community. This will continue our momentum from the farmers and harvest market and provide the community a vibrant experience. For example, in April, we'll collaborate with a local school to have a spring concert. Including an interactive and educational component that will give children of all ages the chance to learn more about their favorite truck. In May, activities will be will be planned and will center around the celebration of Mexican customs and cultures. Highlighting cultural dancing, mariachis, and colorful pot- pottery. In June, the opportunity to grab an ice cold brew from one of our local breweries and try an array of barbecue vendors. Including an element of a backyard cooking competition competition. In July, we will be in conjunction with our ID celebration, asking the market vendors to be part of the evening activities for our Fourth of July festivities. In August this month, we'll be celebrating classic cars and rock and roll. September will be similar to our back-to-school farmer's market event that we had this year. Providing fun carnival rides, face painting, and backpack and school supplies to give away to support our local students. In October, we will conclude our market with fall festive activities such as the pumpkin patch, have. Our artisan vendors focused on fall theme. Um, artisan vendors and Scarecrow Alley that is partnering with local businesses. Next slide. The less eye-catching but most important financial component is the proposed budget for the Saturday market. Detailed here are the expenses tied to adding on a Saturday evening market to engage your community with a total bottom line projected cost of just under twenty thousand. Some of these expenses, just to give you a brief overview, would entail. Training, which would be from the Farmer's Market Coalition. That that training would network with other farmer's market and other vendors to. To talk about trends, process, and what the new permitting. To talk about trends, process and what the new permitting processes to be a farmer's market vendor. In addition to advertising, um just a brief nap on advertising, we would focus on um social media boasts, boost. Uh website, digital campaigns, additional banners throughout the community. As well as radio plugs um that goes out weekly to promote that this is happening. Next slide. Of course, adding a new market would make necessary the adding on of new staff costs to support the business operation of the new event. As you can see, we're asking for additional project specialist compensation as well as a part-time rec worker staff. Pay to cover the added hours of coordinating the operation of the Saturday Market. The overall management of the market would still be overseen by the Parks and Rec Director and myself, but the added coordination of vendors promotions, logistics setup. Cleaning and maintenance of the market would require additional staffing. That total additional staff cost is projected at three thousand two fifteen. Next slide. With the harvest marking, with the harvest market last year generating over seven hundred and fifty dollars in city revenue. And twenty-seven artisan vendors and nine vendors, we foresee the Saturday Market if not meeting, but exceeding the same level of successful numbers. Based on the numbers of the harvest market, we targeted from April through June for this coming year, our goal would be thirty vendors. And for July through October would be a goal of forty vendors. That reaching the artisan vendors to be nine thousand three hundred and food vendors and prepackaged would be four, four thousand eight hundred. In addition, we have partnered with a local business here that has participated in our farmer's market and wants to continue the partnership and will be sponsoring. Um as a partner again this coming year. As you have reviewed, as we have reviewed, we are asking for direction for the seasonal offering of the Saturday Market. However, however, with this invest, we anticipate bringing more pride in being a great American little town. Thank you again for listening to this presentation, I hope that you are as excited as me and my team are to provide the City of Galt. With something new and exciting at, at a time we could all use a little more joy. Thank you to the City Council for your continued support of the Galt Market and for your support of continued growth and expansion of everything we do.
So as recommended at the September twenty-first meeting that no action was taken. This is our idea for our pilot program. And the recommendation to City Council is to review the staff report, receive presentation and provide direct. Direction to staff, so we're willing to take any uh questions at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna um open the public comment period up, so if anybody has a public comment, they can raise their hand uh or press star nine and I'll call on. You from time to time as we discuss this, um I'll start off with Vice Mayor Sandu, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh first of all, I'd like to thank you Mayor and my colleague, uh all the council member gave me the opportunity. But last time when we discussed that and uh they wanna. Make a decision on when the front council, I really thank you Mayor and all the council members. Uh I believe in the council member Badenburger, he asked about the weekend uh. Operation, I believe he's in mind why we can make some more kind of profit, we can make some more money. Because all other city, uh uh some of the other city basically free market, they're running weekend market. And then I was looking that report was presented on uh, I think September twenty-first, when I was not on the council. Let me one, I'm looking for, there was a uh reminder that we, we, we going to comparison, there is a four flea market, right? One in San Jose, I think one in Roseville, on Wilson Way and San Walker in uh College, right?
Correct, those are the four uh markets that we identified as competitors.
And thank you for you guys get a lot of research on a lot of uh things and first thing I'm looking for the current car. Market vendor survey. And did you get the survey and we have a sixty-one percent uh the vendor, they are willing to come back uh on the weekend, right? And that was very good, you know, sixty percent vendor, they currently if they make it, maybe not make a comment, but if they said. Commitment, but they said sixty-one percent is, it's very good, if we run uh the flea market uh on the weekend. Then I also looking for the current vendor number of suggestion they have, I believe there is a good suggestion. Then surrounding neighbor survey. And I'm a little bit, you know, uh I don't know how staff get their survey because the neighborhood. Uh as you know, feedback is very important, I'd say. Uh when I'm watching that meeting, uh thank you for uh council member Rachel Lozano, he uh he also mentioned that it's very important. For neighbor for the survey. Then we have a customer survey. Uh the customer survey means who will come to the flea market if we open. Or if we decide or just thinking about if we can open on a free market. And we have eighty-eight percent. You know, every business depend on the customer. Where we can get the money, how the customer can approach to uh to this. And then uh the staff gets the survey from God's staffs. Uh staff survey and they also make a very good comment, they say could bring the community a new source of family entertainment. And great idea would be another way to bring revenue. Revenue is very important for citizen, very important for council, very important for the staff. Uh then uh I believe you guys did a show uh media survey. And ninety-seven percent. Uh the, on, on the social media, they said they be uh would come to shop in Galt if we open on the weekend. And that's a surprise, I think surprising should be with everybody. Then, then I was looking at the report, uh scenario number one. Uh. Uh mi- mister Heinz uh. Mister Heinz, sixty-one percent. Uh how we figure out sixty-one percent? That's the very low figure when we opening any business or when we propose budget, right?
I think Director Solis is probably uh has an answer for that.
Sorry about that.
Uh as we discussed uh last week, Vice Mayor, that sixty-one percent was taken from that survey. Where sixty-one responded saying that they would. They would participate, although that is just a verbal commitment, we still use what we believe is a high number. It, that sixty-one percent.
So sixty-one percent about six hundred, right?
No, that is not anywhere near six hundred, sixty-one percent of our current Tuesday or Wednesday market. Let me see if I can find that real quick.
Can you put that a map on a?
Yeah, let me see if I can find it really quick.
While you're looking, wasn't that sixty-one percent of the people that responded, not necessarily one hundred percent of the vendors that show up to the market?
It was sixty-one percent of the people that responded to the survey.
Okay. So I'm talking about the sixty-one percent, I believe is sixty percent vendor, we think they're gonna come on the weekend, right?
I do not believe sixty-one percent of the vendors that participated or sixty-one percent would come. Okay, that is, that is what the social media.
I'm looking at the report, this sixty-one percent equal to three sixty-six, what that calculation means?
I'm pulling up the map right now. Soon as I can find it, sorry, was not prepared for this question. So um our typical. Our typical sales on Tuesday around seven hundred, Jackie, did you say that's correct?
Yes.
And, and on Wednesday, five fifty?
Yeah, I would say about.
So we took the sixty-one percent of those two numbers for Tuesday and a sixty-one percent of Wednesday, so you could see what those numbers became.
Okay, so we was thinking sixty-one percent, the people can be, the vendor can become on a weekend. So that's mean the rate we thinking is lower is twenty dollar, right? That's the lowest rate, I look up all the uh flea market uh in our competitors, right?
Yes, that, that would put us in line with our competitors.
Right, and then the annual weekly fifty-two weeks, we are looking for three hundred eighty. Thousand dollar, right? And then the next line is ten rainy days, what, what that mean is uh ten rainy days?
So what that means is when we account for our revenues, currently, we account for rain days. So there is no selling of the market, we don't do any resells, we don't do any dailies. Uh we account for uh no extra revenue on those days.
So, so, so that's means we are figuring out ten days a year, then can be no revenue, right?
Yes, and that's what we do during our current Tuesday, Wednesday market.
Okay, and how many days uh this last year, we don't do the video, except. Uh let's go not about the last year because there was a COVID. Let's back on twenty nineteen, if you kind of remember, how many days you might we have it any day on twenty nineteen?
I do not have that information available to me today.
Okay, okay, then, then I also we're looking at the expense, right? Uh the salary and wages, six hundred thirty-eight thousand. So that salary we also calculate and how we calculate the salary.
So basically, if you're asking us to put on a Tuesday, Wednesday market on the weekends, we basically have to double our staff. Um we, we only have three full-time staff or excuse me, two full-time staff at the market currently, the rest are part-time and temporary. Uh which means if we wanted to uh use those staff, we'd have to make them full-time, which would totally. Take that six hundred thousand dollars and at least double it and there still would not be enough hours for them. So you're basically taking our current budget staff and doubling it, we'd have to hire a whole new staff for that.
Plus benefits, right?
Well, depending on, we would hire another full-time position, that's what that includes, so that would be benefits, part-time people get uh. A few benefits, but not anything extraordinary, they get PTO, personal time off. And then uh the temporaries uh are not benefited. At all.
So, 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 so that means if we're doing the business on the weekend, it can be almost double salary, right?
Then what we're doing on Tuesdays and Wednesdays is correct.
And the reason is because we cannot change any change of schedule to any employees. And including part-time or non-bargaining unit uh employee.
We can change their schedule, but there's not enough hours in their, in the week for them. Uh half, I would say about a third of them currently work between thirty-two and thirty-six hours. And the other ones only work up to twenty hours, that is to keep them underneath uh the, us having to pay any type of retirement into their pay.
All right, and the next line is operation and maintenance, so this operation and maintenance is. Is very much compared with the weekday is double or that's very much same, i- i- is the weekday is right now is Tuesday events.
For the most part, what we did is we took our budget on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and applied it to a weekend market. There are some overlapping things that we would not have to, to do, uh such as rental of equipment and things like that, but for the majority, we. If we are successful and we did do a full weekend, we would have to pay our water bill, pay our garbage bill, buy toilet paper. Buy hand towels, uh garbage bags, all those things again, those are things that we could not just reuse.
Okay, okay, so on this scenario one, if we do a minimum twenty dollar. And we have a sixty-one, we start as a business and sixty-one percent. Is the vendor, and vendor when we start it always business, when we start a new thing, anything, it's always increase. The percentage is always increase more, more vendors can be willing to do. And same thing, customer, and we, any business we start is can starting coming more business, uh more customer, I never seen any business. In the first when we start. Is, is eighty percent, then it's coming down, it never happened, it's always there, and the business start is a good way. It's a, i- i- is, is the right process, is always start. In a low rate, it's going down to awkward. I know, I'm, I'm agree with you, whatever you wanna report, but I just wanna be a clarification. And then I see the scenario number two. And I believe this is a rate, just only you plug in the rate thirty-five, then it comes up a little bit profit, right?
Yes.
Uh and thirty-five, I, I, we all know is thirty-five a little bit high as compared to our competitor. But my thing is, if we start the new business, if we think we can start with is. Sixty-one, but see. Three hundred sixty-six vendor. And what you think is if, if, if we, i- i- if the process, i- i- if the, it will start, what you think it will not increase? The vendor and will not and increase the customer?
I do not believe we'll start at sixty-one percent as those numbers indicated in that survey. I'm. I'm not sure what we would do.
So, so, so I'm talking about the survey might be a little bit off.
Well, if the survey is the survey, that's the answer they gave. But when, when it's time to pay the rent and leave the other market or buy a truck to come to the second market and hire another helper to come here. That's when you would truly know if, if their vote was yes meant yes.
So, so, so my question is, this report show, if we open the market on the weekend, we can lose the money.
I believe we will.
But on the survey. The, if, if we're looking at the vendor, they're willing to come.
On paper.
I, I, I'm, I'm looking at the survey you guys did, the customer looking to come to the business. And I do understand, I don't go to detail, but we, we, we may be discussed in the future with something. And double cost to the labor, uh I don't know, I can believe whatever you, you saying to me, but on the weekend. If any business run, weekdays and weekend, there much difference? It's very much, uh you know, it's, 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 I, I, I know you, you might be looking at the different way. And I do understand. There's a private business. And the government made it to run a different way, I do understand. But if you really look, principle is the same, it's no matter you run federal government, it's no matter. Uh city-state, the basic principle to run a business is same. Uh then, then also, that's why we decided not. To recommend the staff recommended not to recommend to do in the weekend, right?
That is correct.
So I'm talking about if, why the other four city, they're doing something different uh. The, why they're running on the weekend? And I'm just, I'm just basically question, why they running on the weekend, if the weekend is losing money, then we.
No, the weekend isn't losing money for them, the weekend would lose money for us.
Uh what was the reason, can you remind?
Well, they're established on the weekends already, denials has been in existence for I believe over seventy years on the weekends. Uh I think Wilson Way's been there over twenty years, Delta, close to twenty years, I believe. And Berry S uh as long as we are, if not longer. You're right, but we're established.
Right, but establish, how we become established, we have to start somewhere. In order, if we see, if we see, I, I'm talking about, I agree with you hundred percent, but I'm, when I look at the survey, you guys done the survey. The vendor wants to work on the weekend. Customer wants to come to the flea market. And that's the revenue, right? And I, the other thing, we need to control the process. They might be a bit more expensive than the revenue, yes, then we do not need to start, then we do not need to start, I, I, I'm hundred percent agree with you. So. I, 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 I don't know, the survey. Uh it is very hard for me to swallow that. You know, if 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 the customer wants to come to spend the money, vendor wants to come to. And we already have the process, we are now starting a new flea market in this town. We already have the space, we already have everything already in process.
Armando.
I'm I'm certainly agree with you, if we losing money, I'm not gonna. There's the basic principle of every business, if you lose the money, don't do it.
Mister Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I join the conversation?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, no problem.
So Armando, how many, because the survey is a survey of those folks. As Councilmember Vandenberg pointed out, a survey of those folks that actually chose to participate in the survey. So Director Solis, how many vendors do we typically have? And how many vendors actually participated in this survey?
It it really depends on the day, but you're looking at three hundred and about three hundred.
Tip on a typical.
On on a Tuesday.
Okay.
These day market.
So how many vendors participated in the survey?
I'm trying to pull that up now.
Alright.
I think what you said is who's asking you, Armando, is how many vendors typically participate on a Wednesday, not three hundred?
No, not on a Wednesday, uh you're looking probably about two hundred, two fifty, depending on the day.
Okay.
Wait, your your staff report says that it's six hundred on either Tuesday or Wednesday, I forget, and seven hundred on the other day.
Spaces, spaces, not vendors. So some vendors will buy three or four spaces, some will buy one, some will buy two. So when we're talking about vendors, you're not talking six hundred and fifty, you're talking, you know, typically cut in half. Because the majority have about two spaces.
Understood, but but for fix sake of conversation, if you're talking about a vendor that takes three spaces. Then you have to now consider that three times the money, it's not a twenty-five dollar space or thirty-five dollar space.
Well, there 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 are a lot of one vendor spaces also, so that's where we're taking that into account.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
So of the folks that have responded, um let's say two hundred and fifty is the the vendor total. Uh here on the second line, are you a galt marketer, daily vendor? So a hundred and two out of that two fifty to three hundred are participating in this survey. Does is that correct?
In that question, so in the above question, do you want to participate? Um a hundred and seventy-six responses uh were yes, so.
Okay.
Those in a hundred two, they some of them wouldn't answer all the questions, these are the questions they were willing to answer, and here's the number of responses we received.
So we've got those folks who are vendor, can you go back to that that please? Uh got those folks who are vendor of a hundred and two, okay, great. Would you be interested in participating in the market? And so a hundred and two of two fifty to three hundred said that they would. And so would you be able to put on a Tuesday Wednesday market if less than half of your vendors didn't show?
We could, uh we would have to cut a lot of things to make it profitable.
Okay, and that hundred and two, and I'm just making these statements for the public's consideration. And that hundred and two was just the survey. So the number of folks who actually. Take advantage of this opportunity will probably be most likely lower than a hundred and two. Is that, am I out of line, Director Solis?
No, it's the this is the one, it it's easy to say yes to a survey.
Yeah.
And and that's why I'm.
But it's but it's it's harder to do the things you mentioned, you know, hiring me.
If if I was putting together the numbers, I would not have used that sixty-one percent.
Right.
The staff report, I used it because that's the number that was given during the survey.
Exactly, and so what we wanted to do was tie that sixty-one percent to the survey. We could have put any percentage there, um but we wanted to at least have some basis for that sixty-one percent. Now, that sixty-one percent may be high. My gut tells me it is high, but it was the best number that was available. And so but using that sixty-one percent, we were able to at least come up with a couple of models. That told us, you know, where the pricing would be per space. Now, we could have very well use fifty percent, we could have very well use sixty-five percent. But you know, that's the number that we had to use and and so. Um, okay, so I'm I'm gonna, and that's all I wanted to say, Vice Mayor. And I I think Councilmember Vandenberg wants to. Join the conversation as well.
Yeah, real quick, just switching on that page, I'm gonna call in Council Vandenberg. Uh can you clarify what that bottom second to the bottom line says? What would keep you from being a vendor at the galt weekend market? And it says lack of attendance, explain what that means, lack of attendance.
Not getting the customers to come here.
So there, so to clarify, a vendor saying that the re sixty-six percent of them are saying the reason. They would, it would keep them from coming to be a vendor at the galt weekend market is because the lack of attendance.
Correct.
Okay, when clearly we don't have a weekend market, so there's no way for them to even know how many people would come. And I want to clarify, and one more thing is, but when you polled customers, you had eighty-eight percent of customers say that if galt had a market, they would come on the weekend. And your social media posts ninety-seven percent said they would come. But it seems like the biggest concern for the people to come is that they're worried about people coming. But yet, our 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 our, the results from our survey on asking customers, would they come? Were outstandingly high, I mean, like ninety-seven percent is like, I mean, I even know. That's like, it almost doesn't get more of a sure thing than ninety-seven percent.
Armando, can you go to the uh social media results?
While you're moving, I would like to say that.
Oh, sorry, sir.
That's quite fine, uh I don't disagree with the statements that were made by the mayor or the city manager, I think those are sound numbers. But I I would like to say that if you know you're going to receive only sixty percent of your vendors, you would not staff one hundred percent for. Uh one hundred percent of the vendors, you would have a reduced staff. And as Armando's uh rightly said, that you know, you know, you you would staff according to making it profitable. So there would, there was not necessarily earlier discussion about the full cost doubling, that's not necessarily true. If you anticipate a lower s- a lower participation rate.
No, the we would still have to station people at the restroom, still station people to take out trash. It may not be taken out as much trash, but I'm still gonna have somebody assigned to that duty. I still have to have office staff, I still have to have night staff to come in and run those blowers. Um and and clean up at night to be done by ten o'clock as requested in the past.
Okay, so that's a very good clarification, because you what you're saying is that even if you had forty percent participation. Up to one hundred percent to participation, you're requiring to fill these spots to make sure the market runs at a correctly.
Yes, we we cannot hold it at a lower standard than our Tuesday and Wednesday market. And and plus, we're under time restraints because of the noise. Uh we have to turn off the blowers at nine o'clock, so I need a full force to go through and clean that off, clean that up and get it done by ten o'clock.
Thank you.
Um do we have any public comment um before I keep going with council members?
Let me double check, uh right now, there are no hands raised.
Okay, um so.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh let me finish.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I apologize, you were done, go ahead.
Uh this is why the report, you know, I was talking about the I was not present and. Uh the other is pilot program, thank you, Armando. And we looking at the report, we does not, if we lose the money, I think I don't have any question, I don't think so. Any other council member have a question if we lose the money. So I like to look at their report again, if you get the opportunity, but on the pilot program, yes, I agree with the pilot. We have to start somewhere. Uh you know, this is a good startup. And on the pilot, uh and the other thing is, they said just only we're doing a once a month. Why we cannot do every other week? Uh what kind of uh problem? And the other that the pilot program, where uh Armando, where are we going to the pilot program, which are we changing the location?
Uh no, we would start off on Fourth Street, that's my recommendation. But again, this is a report to city council and council can direct staff to do anything that you would like. If you'd like us to start on a weekend, Saturday, Sunday market, you can direct us to do that. If you'd like us to do the pilot program that we're recommending, we can do that, or we can do anything that you're asking us to do. All I ask is that you fund it appropriately, so we can make sure it's successful.
Right, and my other question is if we uh doing on the Fourth Street. And we are already have the play changing the location. It's not gonna be a little bit difficult to the customer and also is not easy to run. Where is we doing right now, but then we have to use extra equipment or there will be no cost to using one way the other any location. But when we're running the operation one place, I I'm just speaking as a normally, changing that operation to the other location. Uh there's some changes, you know, some equipment you already have on that location, you have to rent or whatever have to do. But in in your operation, you know better than me, uh there can be any cost. Uh.
We we can save some cost by moving it to the veterans field. Um there for um restrooms would be the biggest cost to rent them. Um there's, we have all the services there, we have electricity, we have lights, we have all those things there. Um you know, we're, we thought we were following what council wanted and trying to do a a community event. And we felt to start that, the Fourth Street Promenade would be the best place to do that.
Okay, and the other thing, my understanding to this, starting this weekend. Is you went, there are a lot of went, we lose the money, we wanna make sure this is this concern to make it happen. It's no matter we started two days a week, Saturday or Sunday in the future. So we can make some kind of revenue on on.
Yes, I believe that we we need to start slow and then grow into that.
Thank, thank you, Armando, thanks.
Um I just wanna make a couple of comments real quick, and then I'm gonna let um call call on Councilman Lozano. Um I I think it's important, based on kind of the questions have been asked so far by Councilman Vandenberg and. And Mister Sandu about the survey, about the market and such as. I I really don't think that we're looking at the same thing, I I think we need to be looking at this as separate things, this pilot program that you guys are presenting tonight. Um I I think the I like the concept of it. Um and and I I won't go into depth what I like or don't like about it, I'll I'll maybe let some others people speak. But but I don't think it's, you you can't, we're not, we can't look at it as the same thing as the galt flea market, because it's not. First of all, I doubt you're gonna have any market vendors, current market vendors right now are gonna go to this Saturday. Um market that you're proposing, I just think it's unlikely, and the reason I say that is because. Um because they're not gonna incur the extra cost to get the extra staff, the extra truck or the extra, all the things that you present in your survey. To show up for a four-hour market on a Saturday night, just don't think they're gonna do it. Um I just think it's too much, it's too much too much of a commitment for them for such a short timeframe. So I think what we're looking at is, what we're really looking at is, we're looking at the farmer's market that we currently, or we already had the Friday night. What it looks like is, you're just trying to take that, what you stated in their staff report, is we're trying to build on that. So this is really the, this is really the Friday farmer's market uh being expanded upon. Um so I think we we, they're really apples and oranges, to be honest with you, and that's why I don't think we should be comparing them. Um at all, because I don't even think we're even talking the same type of vendors at all, I think it's totally set to separate thing. So I just wanna state that, moving forward, I have some other comments, but I'm gonna let Rich go and then see if uh other councilors wanna speak, so Mister Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I um I just wanna throw this out there. Um it I I'm just gonna pick numbers, not up, not up out of the staff report or anything, but. Eighty eighty percent of a hundred is much different than eighty percent of five hundred. And I know I'm I'm kind of exaggerating it a little bit, my point is this. If people took the time to respond to a survey, they had some initiative, right? They or they they had some interest in doing the survey. I think what we need to do is look at those who didn't, if we're going to look at those statistics. I would agree with the mayor, this isn't uh what 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 we are being proposed. Um is not a a a flea market in the flea market grounds. And I don't know that 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 will be uh successful at this point on a Saturday afternoon. Um what I what I see in front of us is a uh program to expand on. Uh what 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 we have already started. And um you know, I don't know if many of you were out there for the Halloween uh is the. Event that occurred on Fourth Street, um but that turnout was huge. Um I don't know that that turnout would have been the same, and again, it wasn't a city event necessarily, but. I don't know if that event would have been the same had we not already started uh that, you know, the regular market. And uh people were, you know, uh I I think were um. They recognized the fact that there was something going on down there, they more, but many people that I saw there had been at the Friday market, so. Um. A couple of questions I had, and and I asked these, and and I want to thank staff for briefing me on this uh ahead of time and answering a lot of the questions that I had. But in the proposed budget, the M and O budget, the nineteen thousand five hundred, is any of that, are any of that? Uh expenditure, are we able to use any of the ARPA funds to for infrastructure or? Um anything in there?
I would, I would have to defer that to the city manager or city attorney.
So the nineteen thousand for M and O? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah, so the question is, is that are we able to to offset any of that but with ARPA funds?
Ooh, um. We, I don't know, um that'll be a discussion I'd have to have with the city attorney. Um.
Yeah.
And that would probably be the lost revenue category, but I still don't know if it's eligible. So I'm a little hesitant about answering that question right now.
Okay, yeah, I I'm not necessarily looking, unless Mister Splendorio has an answer off the top of his head, uh not necessarily. For an answer, but if you do, um cool.
Yeah, it's it uh we we're kind of limited at general governmental services, so this is kind of in that, in that in-between space. So we'd have to think about it, because this is essentially a uh. An adjunct kind of business, so to speak, for the city, not necessarily providing, you know, park services and fire services. And police services and all the other kinds of services, so.
Yeah.
Have to think about that.
Okay, yeah, and and I I was thinking more of um. Something to to recover from COVID uh as 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 an enterprise, right? I mean, we're we're looking at doing something different. Uh much of the reason is, is that we've had some some downturn. And uh certainly, last couple of years uh has affected us, so. Um. I I like, I like what was been, what's been proposed by staff, I I think it's something that could take off. Um and so, um but but I agree that it is, um it's it's a much different discussion than. Than what the Vice Mayor was asking about, um and maybe that comes at a later time. But certainly, if if you were to ask me in in terms of what the staff report is requesting. Um I would say uh move forward, how how can we pay for it? Um and and let's let's get families together out there. Once this uh spike rolls through and with COVID and. Um I I think that they've got great things planned, April through through October, so. Uh anyhow, but those are my thoughts, and I will let somebody else go.
So to to piggyback real quick on what Rich was saying, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think I just, again, wanna be clear. Um I I think what Councilman Vandenberg and what myself and the well, the council as a whole had discussed back in April was. You know, the whole concept of the weekend flea market was as a a attempt to. You know, turn around the fortunes of the market. You know, turn around the fortunes of the market and and make it, you know, more prosperous, um. That was the attempt, whereas I feel this concept, which again, I'm not. Saying that in a negative way, I'm just saying what we're being presented with tonight, and we can talk about it in a different manner, and I'm I'm prepared to do that, is really bringing. A com- a a different type of community event to the community, like you you've taken the farmer's market, which. You know, was pretty successful, um, for the most part, and you're saying let's build on that to to create a different type of thing, so you're just trying to come up with a different thing that's. Something different than the galt market, I just want to make sure that you understand there's a clear distinction because. Now, if you wanted to make them similar, then we'd be we'd be talking about doing what you're proposing tonight, but bringing. Flea market vendors, and I'm not talking about vendors like we have over there, I'm talking about where you have. You know, you don't just have the live music and the and the and the food and the and the entertainment and those 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 entertainment, um. Aspects of this of this Saturday market, but you also have, you know, your uh. Your art, you know, you you are gonna have some artisan vendors, I I assume, but I'm assuming they're gonna be similar to the ones we have the weekend, uh the Fri- Friday farmers market, but I'm talking about, you know, you have like your. Your people bringing, selling, like they're having a swap meet spot more or less, and they're selling antiques, they're selling this and that, and you have. You know, you have what I envisioned is Fourth Street blocked off, and you have all the grass with certain types of things, and then you have the entire street with people with booths selling. You know, those types of things where you do have your your flea market element to that. That would be something where you're kind of morphing the two, but it's the way I'm reading it right now, we're really looking at two different things. What I would ask, and I have a couple of questions, so so I'm now I'm just looking at this new thing you're proposing, I'm just looking at isolated by itself. Um, so this this new Saturday market, um, and and I don't know, Armando or Jackie, you could ask me. Tell me, what would be the distinct differences between what we saw with the Friday farmer's market and this new Saturday market? What are name, what's gonna be different about it besides obviously the date?
So what we're basing this on is that October market that was not a farmer's market. That October market is is something that we put together. And Jackie, can you go into details again and and can you also uh state the numbers that we had that night again? Um, for that October market, not the farmer's market, but that special October market that we did.
Okay, yes, hold on, let me pull up my information again. So with the farmer's market or the harvest market, we partnered, we continued our partnership with the Samakine Certified Farmer's Market. Um, with that, we collaborated with them and invited our local vendors as well as their farmer's market vendors, so a total of twenty seven artisan vendors. And nine food vendors um were brought to the harvest market. With that, um, we set up a different setup of the of the layout of the facility or area, so there was both vendors on both sides. Um, as well as we asked farmers to come out and set up their pumpkin patch or. Um, provided a different experience, not just shopping, but an experience for the entire family.
So would we be, so would you be expecting any additional or or is actually would they even be allowed? Uh, any, let's say we have produce vendors, for example, that come to the Tuesday, Wednesday market and they want to participate in our once a month. That they we can't do that because this is a certified, it's a different thing, right?
Um, I don't believe, I believe we could. Again, you, there are certain market vendors that you do wanna see in mixed in this, and we understand that. And that's where we're talking about possibly recruiting some local ones, some at the very beginning to get that word of mouth. And I see which where you wanna go into blocking the streets and I and I hope to get there one day, I just think we need to start at this.
So what I what what I what I envision, and this is my last statement, I'm gonna let Councilman Vanderburg go, so everybody gets time. What what I envisioned, and I told you when you first pitched this idea, and again, I'm I'm not, to clarify, I'm not opposed to this 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 pilot. I I just, um, I just wanna understand exactly what it's gonna be and what I think you guys have envisioned it going, but. What I had envisioned originally was like a load I street fair, where you have, you know, you have a mix of, it's kind of like. A flea market and a and a farmer's market kind of blended into one, where you have like one aisle, it's just a bunch of these kinds of things, and there's another aisle. And I'm not saying we're gonna have aisles, so to speak, but that's what I envisioned, when you said we're gonna do a once a month thing where people could come out and there's music and there's. People can, there's people selling things, that's that that's what I envisioned. But, and I guess, you know, and maybe I'm wrong, but when I read the staff report, I felt it was more like just the farmer's market. With maybe just a few extra vendors thrown in, and I just, um, I just wanna be clear exactly what I'm, what I'm approving, um, because I don't want any misconceptions. Um, and 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 I also have concern about the hours, and I'm gonna let. Uh, let me let Councilman Vanderburg speak and then I'll come back, so um Jay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, um, yeah, I I agree with you about the hours, I I think the hours should not be four hours in the evening, I think it should be eight hours and it should start early. Um, I I would, if we're gonna make these kind of a family events, I would like to see it where. Uh, kids aren't coming when they're tired, they're coming in the mornings on the summer days when it's cooler, um. And they they have, the family has a an opportunity to do it as a day event, not just something they could pop in at the end of the week, um, in the evenings. Uh, I'd like to see, um. Maybe constantly ask the citizens what they'd like to see and and as far as vendors and try to cater to that a little bit, because we're trying to long term. Transition to a, as you know, make money, that's the bottom line and and give the citizens what they want, so uh. This would not be on the market property, so how are we going to ensure that? This would be going towards parks and recs funds, because initially that was one of the main reasons I wanted to do a weekend market is to help. The Parks and Recreation Fund. Has that been finalized?
I'm sorry, I'll start with your first question regarding hours. One of the reasons that we picked these hours is that, as you know, uh Galt is a huge sports town. It it just is, kids play sports every Saturday, some play on Saturday and Sunday, and we felt if we did it early in the morning. A lot of those parents and kids are at their games, you know, in early April, it's baseball. In June, you start football and soccer, and then that goes into uh the fall through October. So that was one of the reasons that we focused on the evening versus the morning. Again, we wanted a community event for everybody to be able to participate. Uh, one of the other things that Jack and I were planning on doing, if this pilot program was approved. Is at the end of the year, we wanted to send out surveys to our citizens to see if they showed up. If they didn't show up, why did they show up? What would they like to see to do different, so we could even make this a better event for twenty twenty three? Um, and then I apologize, what was the last question, Councilman Vanderburg?
Oh, um, the funds, were are there guarantees of where the funds will go?
The the event is being held on a park, so it it would go into oh six five.
Okay, um, and, oh, I that's right, I wanted to go back to. I'm not sure what slide number it is, but it was the financials part of. Uh, cost and revenue. And I I wanted to clarify or ask.
Would you like revenues or expenditures?
That that one's fine, start that one and you go down one, so I want to clarify that this is for an entire, well, the proposed uh seven twelve dates that you proposed?
Correct, that would be for the entire uh season, April through October.
Then go down one slide, please. And this would be the revenue generated?
That this is the staff budget.
Right, okay, then you have a the a revenue page?
There's the revenue page.
So this would be the the total revenue, we would do all this work for fifteen thousand dollars for the entire year?
Fifteen six, we would estimate to lose between six to seven thousand dollars the first year.
So, even though we're doing a reduction, you're anticipating a loss overall of seven grand roughly?
Yes, uh, we've put a lot of money into our advertising line item. Um, we really are, have to design logos. Those are some of the first time costs that will come through here as we get word of mouth and can. And cut back on advertising the second year and and the some of the uh advertising costs that are associated with opening up a new market.
Then then how would you propose expanding uh the amount of vendors to overcome that problem?
Well, we would continue to recruit, I mean, this is what we we believe we can start off with. I believe if we provide a a quality product, people will come. And if we can get the the citizens to come out to this, we can get the vendors to come out to this. Uh, I believe Jackie stated that uh she had a comment from one vendor that said this was the best festival she had ever been to and sold out completely. Um, she was getting those kinds of comments from the October event that we held that was not a farmer's market, it was a. What this is being modeled up.
Do do you think it was that good because it was a Halloween event or simply, or why?
Jackie, can you speak to that, why you think that that was successful?
Sure, I think the added elements, um, not only did we have children's activities, but there was an element of connecting with local businesses. Um, as part of the scarecrow alley, so with them participating and signing up. Um, we not only connected with them and provided them the information, but we gave them all of our social media opportunities that we had, so they were sharing on their social media sites too. And connecting of what we have going on that day.
Okay, um, and then the last consideration is. You know, um, in a perfect world, this would maybe on like the Fourth of July event, hold that. At Veterans Field because it would kind of extend what's going on there, I don't just consider, but. Consider the possibility of getting uh local businesses to participate in this if it were to move to the market property in ways we could. Help them slide over and and be a participant in it, that's all.
We we would love to have all, every local business participate in some manner. I mean, that that is our goal to get the community involved in this whole uh evolving program.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry, I'm on mute, Councilman Papin, I'll go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, I just uh appreciate the plan and the the presentation, and I think from the perspective of the overall benefit of the community. I think your proposal looks like a great starting point, I think, to engage the community. And the vendors kind of right there in the heart of the city where they, vendors and the community can also. Engage with businesses down there that they may not have otherwise uh come in contact with, especially on Saturday night, so. Um, one suggestion, you mentioned uh soliciting feedback. Uh, to hopefully, you know, improve for twenty twenty three, and I would suggest. To the extent possible, make that a uh kind of a constant feedback circle perhaps between months so that uh. You know, you can make adjustments where possible during twenty twenty two and. You know, you may you may find that the the demand is such that you can can actually increase within this year and uh. And maybe cut a little bit of that projected loss, which uh is a pretty modest uh. Loss for a a first year startup with all those uh expenses, so. You know, I I think it's good and I encourage you guys to to move forward and I'm eager to see uh what it grows into, thanks.
Do we have any public comments, Tina?
No hands raised.
Okay, for those of you watching, if you would like to comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom. Or you can press star nine if you are on the telephone and we will call on you for public comment. Um, I uh. Going back to what we were kind of saying it, um. I mean, I understand the honesty in saying that, you know, we're anticipating a loss the first year. What bothers me a little bit is that we're willing to take a loss the first year on this concept, but the concept of a weekend flea market at the market grounds and all that. Um, because of your numbers and you, because of the lack of confidence in the survey numbers, saying that you you per, you you have a feeling that we'd lose money. Uh, that seems to be a no go, so I feel like there's just some, I don't know, seems difference of opinions here. I I'm not, I'm not gonna say no to this idea, I think it's would be a good thing for the community. Um, I think it'll be a fun event, um, I'm cautiously optimistic of the turnout, um, the hours is what really bothers me, I'll be honest with you, because. My theory is four P M to to eight P M. You know, I remember those farmer's markets, and again, you're not saying it's like the farmer's market, but what I will say is that there's a lot, there's a big difference between having a market or a harvest festival or whatever we called it. In that in the fall compared to having this particular event you're talking about running in June, July, August. You're gonna be in the hottest part of the day, I really feel like the participation is gonna is gonna be hurt by that, whereas. And I understand the whole thing about sports, you know, if little Johnny's got a game in the morning, you're gonna not have people wanna come if it starts at say ten A M. But I don't think you should assume that everybody in town uh is involved with sports, and I think there's lots of people that would come. If the if the if it started at ten or eleven in the morning and participate in some things, and then maybe would other people would come in the evening, so. Uh, I I just, I think the four hours, I I just think it's so limiting and you're talking about. You know, certain times of the year, you're probably gonna have at least an hour of that time in darkness. So, um, I mean, not saying we can't have, but you have that grass area out there, so you have to figure out how you're gonna have lighting. Um, it's not gonna be on the street, so I mean, I have lots of, I still have lots of concerns and lots of questions, I mean, I hope. That if we, you know, give direction to move forward on this, that you guys are gonna be able to figure all that out. Um, because I feel like by my putting my support behind this, it's a big, it's a big leap of faith because, um. I just, I have some concerns about it, but I wa- but I will say, again, I will reiterate that this. This idea and what you're doing tonight, I feel is in no way, shape or form. What what we felt we needed for the market on a weekend expansion, I I I just, I don't think. I don't know, I mean, you know what, maybe I'm wrong and hopefully I'm wrong, but. Um, I just think, you know, we're looking, this this initial concept of this of this market weekend thing was about. Turning around fortunes of the market, generating serious money on a weekend market, which I believe, I do feel, I genuinely believe that the market's capable of doing that on weekend. Maybe not initially, but it it would, um. So by pursuing this instead of that, I feel like, you know, we are doing something great for the community, but we're also just prolonging the discussion of the weekend and. A cam that's been kicked down the road for years, I I just feel like we're just, the city is just afraid to step up and say. We have a market and we have a lot of, you know. Uh, people that frequent our market and we have a lot of loyal customers and we've had people say they would come to our market on the weekend, but yet. No matter what the numbers are, we just are scared to do anything.
Mayor, we're we're able to pivot into that weekend market if that's the direction of council or the wish of council. I mean, this this was, the recommendation is for you to provide direction to us. If that's the, if that's the angle you would like us to go, we can easily do that, this is the pilot program that we're, we have in in the report, but. Again, we can do whichever one you prefer us to do.
May I pipe in, gentlemen?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
So I I have pretty much stayed out of the conversation tonight and just let Director Solis. Um, handle that, he is actually, he's the subject matter expert in these areas, but there's a couple of areas that I. I wanted to just make sure the public got my thoughts on. Um, granted, the scenarios that we presented to council in the prior staff report. In that we did show loss, a loss in both scenarios, but in one scenario, there was um. There was a, there was a loss and there was in another scenario, there was a small profit. And we're also showing a loss here. And what I want the public to understand, at least from my perspective, it's the magnitude of the loss. You've got a almost fifty million dollar budget, at least for this year, all funds. And so we are projecting, because we are conservative when it comes to those projections, about a seven thousand dollar loss. We're gonna work our tails off to to mitigate that loss as best we can. And so the seven thousand that we project now may actually be two, or it may be a small profit. But we wanna take the shot. Um, the other thing is, um, and Mayor, forgive me, um, there is no fear in this staff. What we have to do here is be cautious. What we have to do here is be cautious. Because unlike the other flea markets, Denios, San Jose, Stockton, these dollars that we're playing with belong to twenty-six thousand taxpayers. And the dollars that those markets play with belong to whoever they're whoever capitalizes their operations, but they're not government. And so with government, there is a certain level of caution that we have to take. And I get where you're coming from, mayor. I get it. Um but there is a certain level of caution that we have to take. And that's, this is sort of the best, not the best, but actually it is the best. We believe it's the best starting point. Now, what we present to you this year in twenty twenty-two may be different in twenty twenty-three. Because based on what we see here in this particular year, as we grow these particular events, um we may be able to now move it to twice a month, and we may be able to do that before the end of this year. Again, we're being conservative. But if we get the kind of turnout like we saw, and I believe Councilmember Lozano mentioned last October, when we had the Halloween festivities and Armando, excuse me, Director Solis, we had, what did we have? What did you say? Five hundred cars? I know I'm taxing you.
Which event are you talking about?
The uh the trunk or treat.
Okay, the trunk or treat was put on by the Lahime. And I wasn't at that event. I know.
Then how about the um, oh, there was one event with the um the reverse parade?
Uh, we had the our October film or trunk or treat, Jackie helped me out, the one on the market grounds.
I just remember we had a lot of cars out there and I think it was in the hundreds. And so if we could build that kind of momentum with these events, um we're looking to, you know, we're looking to get that kind of participation. We're also looking to engage our community to let them know that these events are here. We want you to come down to the market um and have fun. And so we've gotta, and that's gonna be a process. And so that's why we wanna, we wanna start where we are. But I have a feeling these events that we presented to you tonight become the cornerstone of what you eventually want these market events to be. But we have to start somewhere. And this is our attempt to start somewhere.
And I and I acknowledge everything you say. I just, it's, there's one thing about having a real big, successful trunk or treat. That doesn't gen- I mean, thi- this really, the brainchild of this was about making money to fix financial woes of the golf market. I, you could, you could have the best, you know, trucker trick or treating, all the businesses. I've I've been down here. I've seen them. I was, you know, participated in the last one. It was phenomenal. But do those equate to big, to those, does that equate to a lot of money? That's gonna make a difference of what, you know, Councilman Vanderburg first pushed for. That's the question. And I just, you know, so if it's a matter of community events and something great for the community, I don't doubt it at all. I actually think this is gonna be a great event for the community, but I just want to, I just want to say that I just think this is still two different things at this moment. And this is not what I consider. And again, I I get what you're saying. This is a seed that maybe it turns into that. And maybe, maybe that's what it does. So again, um so not to keep kicking that that discussion, um to, if we're just focusing on moving forward with this particular idea. If this is the case and the council tonight is gonna support uh what you guys have proposed, I would ask, is there any possibility that we could discuss changing the hours? Is maybe, maybe we don't decide that tonight, but maybe count staff comes back and and says, let's maybe is that a possibility to expand the hours beyond what you guys have done? Maybe make it a a noon to to five thing or something. I just feel like four hours is just so small for a once a month event. That would be my only, that would be my only request to tweak this be- before I would be very much on board with it.
We're, we're willing to take direction from council on anything that you'd like.
I mean, I obviously, I don't know how you would determine. You can't really go out. I mean, I don't know, maybe you could. I mean, would it be possible for, here's an idea. Would it be possible for us without expending a bunch of money? Maybe just a simple Facebook poll or something the city could put out there. You know, I don't wanna spend a bunch of time on it, but just poll the community. You know, and say, we're gonna be doing a weekend market on Saturday. This is what we're gonna be doing. Would you prefer the hours were this or would you prefer the hours to be that? And just see what the, see what the feedback comes back.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can I ask you what time you think is is cha- if they're changing it then what time or what time uh you prefer?
Well, I mean, any, any event that I've ever gone to on a weekend, like Extravaganza, for example, let's use that, very successful event. We used to have every Easter. You know, I know it's a once a year event, but you know, that started in the morning and then it wrapped up by the by the afternoon. I get that you want there to be an evening element of this. I get that. Um but I think that you're only proposing it like a way, uh it's only, it only has an evening element. I think it needs to have more of a daytime element as well. I mean, I would propose something like an eleven, an eleven to seven. If you ended at seven, then you're not gonna get into darkness. Or maybe a noon to eight. I I just something, I don't know. I'm just spitballing here, but I I don't, even the LA Street Fair starts at like, you know, they start at like, well, they start really early. They start like eight A M and it wraps up at like five or something like that. So Councilman Vanderburg.
Uh I would like to move, so move that we go forward with the plan with the adjusted hours from eight to seven P M, eight A M or ten to seven P M. Do I have a second?
Well, I think we're just looking for direction here, so we don't need a vote.
Okay.
I mean, is there any way, Armando, we could, we could?
You don't have to ask them for permission. That's my point is, is that if you want it, I want it. Do we have a third council member that would like to see expanded hours? And that's the, that's the direction.
You know, before I say jazz, I'm gonna ask uh uh rema- Mister Solis. Mi- Mister Solis.
I'm here.
Uh, if we change the time, for example, maybe expanding that time that's where the other council member asking and change the time, what you think is can be negative? That's.
I, I was trying to answer that question. I think uh Mayor Farmer has a great idea and we could pull that. You could give us the direction now. We could put out, uh I can work with uh Mayor Farmer and putting together some suggested times. And then uh I I really think whatever the community voted on, I'm I'm okay going with that. That may, if you're expanding the times, that may tweak a little bit of that budget for the staffing. But uh I, I'm perfectly fine if that's the direction that's given. Um I honestly, I think that's a great idea to do that.
As you know, the other thing is if we, anytime, if we extend the time now, if after a couple of months, you feel this is time is not working, then we can change the time. It's not gonna be a big deal. So just, just on the, you know, just to extend the time and move forward, then if we need to, i- is something not too much earlier, then change your whatever time uh i- is from the survey.
Yeah, and and uh Councilman Vanderburg is correct. I mean, we're, we're, we're taking direction from you. You you tell us what you want and we, that's what we'll do.
Um Mister Papin, I'll, you've had your hand up. I apologize. Go ahead.
Yeah, and no worries. No, I just, you know, before we jump to changing the uh, changing the hours, um I kind of made a decision based on the M and O staffing revenue and all that stuff. So I'd like to hear uh what that would look like and uh at least a little bit of an idea before we just jump into you know, doubling the hours or changing them or or whatever. So I'm all for, I'm all for hearing about it. But I'd like to hear the information first before making a decision.
So how about, and I I see your hand up, Rich. Uh do you give me just a second? So how about? How about we give direction to move forward on the idea? Asking staff to to reach out to the community and some poll to see what hours would be the most, most uh, most popular. Um we have until April to start this. They can start the ball rolling on, you know, generally getting the event planned and they can come back to us and say thirty days and say, here's what, we came back. Here's what the public seems to like, the best hours. Here's the M and O cost. This is how they would change. What do you guys think? And then we can put our final stamp. I mean, that's just, so, so we're not really locking down hours. I'm not committing one way or the other, but I'd like to see what the public thinks. That's just an idea. Rich, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
A couple of things. I think that whatever we start with, at least for the first several um months, probably the first year, we probably should see, keep the same in terms of time. Uh consistency, uh I'm I'm not a great business person, but I I know a little bit about it. Consistency in product and in operation is what makes you money. And if we after, after a period of time uh change, uh then it it's just gonna throw people off. So I think whatever we do, we need to do it really quickly. Um I think thirty days is way too far out um for that, because we have advertising, printing. There's tons of stuff that's that they need to do uh to make it work. And so I I, if we're gonna do something different other than uh the times that were established and it's going to affect the the budget, uh I certainly wanna know what that is as well, but uh we need to do that sooner than later because uh asking staff to pu- pu- turn that all the way, all around. While still running what they're, they're doing uh already and our expectations as a group uh that they exceed standards in those areas. Uh and by this, we need to get it done quickly. So, but this is my thoughts.
I I would agree with that and I I would agree consistency is is good. So that's why I wanna get it right.
If, if I may comment, I, it it's gonna be hard for us to wait thirty days. Um I'm not gonna be able to recruit vendors, get things going on a, I don't know what time kinda, kinda thing. So um
How quickly can you poll? How quickly could you put a poll up on?
I can put it up in the morning, as long as we have somebody to do that.
You could put a poll up and run it for a week, and even if you got a hundred people, that gives us a good snapshot. Bring it back to the very next council meeting. Would that be soon enough?
Yes, we'll see.
So Mister Mayor, if I may, um I propose, and this is aligned to everything you just said, that we'll go ahead and let's get Director Solis to put a poll up in the morning. Um let's leave it up for a week or so. And I will put this agenda back. I'll put this item back on the agenda for February first.
Well, can I jump in?
Yes.
Sorry. So if uh we put it up for a week, that is through the twenty-sixth, agenda goes out on the twenty-seventh for February first.
So the thing is, what we may end up doing is leaving it up and actually reporting out on the results on that Tuesday of the council meeting on February first.
Sure.
How does that work, city clerk? Does that work fine? Tina?
Yeah, just the agenda report will have to state, state your funding, the other docu- the other information you're requiring. So you could just talk about the poll results.
Okay. Director Solis, your thoughts?
I just would like uh some direction from council on the number of hours they would like to see it open, so we could list that in the poll. Would it be four, five, six? That way I can put together some times.
All right. So is there a general consensus, Mayor? I'm I'm just gonna ask. Is there a general consensus for four hours? And I'm gonna ask the same question for five hours. Mayor is saying six.
A minimum of six.
Okay, and Councilmember Vandenberg is saying at least nine. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Councilmember, eight to seven?
No, I was open to different hours, but I wanted certainly more than four, you know, six, eight.
So, so Councilmember Vandenberg, how do you feel about six?
That could work. I I prefer to just to start instead of doing a poll, though, and and I don't know that.
We may very well be getting to that now. Councilmember Lozano, how do you feel about six?
You know, here, here's the deal. Uh I I'd be happy with six. I I would like to know what type of vendor response we would get with four. So Armando, could, could, do you have any insight to that? What, you know, are we gonna get more vendors at six or more at four?
Um, only information I have regarding vendors is uh Jackie's uh been letting me know that uh we would have trouble recruiting farmer's market vendors at an earlier market because they're established in other locations. That doesn't mean that we still can't be successful. Um but that's the information she's getting and she can get that in a written documentation from the vendor we're working with if if council decide, desires that. Uh I will, we'll make, we will work as hard as we can to make any number of hours work. Just remember, it it will affect the bottom line on uh on the cost.
Perfect. And and that's, that that would just be my question is, you know, we're, we're talking about hours and and that takes into operations. And so I just wanna make sure that we're gonna be successful with vendors and uh every, everything. So um I'm I'm flexible.
So Director Solis, the numbers that you've presented to us is based on how many hours of operations?
Four hours.
Okay.
But it will not change the M and O cost. The only cost it would change is um the staffing.
I I look, I mean, we're talking about making a, we're talking about doing something big here. Like, I mean, we really wanna get this right. I really feel like the public should give some input on the hours. I mean, we might have an overwhelmingly heavy survey of, you know, fifty, sixty, even a hundred people that say, oh yeah, this hours would be better. And then it'll, and if we were presented with that, we would all go, oh, it's a no-brainer. Let's go with those hours. Right now, we're just guessing. Um I mean, I think it's worth it to do that. I mean, a poll for a week, this thing's not gonna die or succeed because we, we do a poll for one week.
Very good, sir. Very good. Director Solis, you wanna, we'll talk about this in the morning?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that. I I think he's on track. I think we should.
All right. All right, Mister Mayor, this will be on the February first agenda and we'll have the results of the poll that night.
Okay, thank you for all the hard work and uh putting this together, Jackie and and Armando and your staff, so. Um hopefully it was successful. So um it's nine forty-seven, so uh do we have any, we need to move on our next item? Um do you have any public comment, Tina?
No pu- no hands raised.
Okay, all right. With that, we're gonna move on to our next item. Is item five, resolution of the Skull City Council establishing a strategic plan as a vital tool to implement a plan of action to achieve results for this new year's twenty-one to twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. Mister Heinz?
Yes, Mister Mayor, members of this Gold City Council, I am so happy to present to the public our strategic plan for twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three, our two-year strategic plan. For the public at large, strategic plans utilized by organizations worldwide as a tool for decision-making and resource allocation. It is a living document that should clearly communicate where an organization's priorities lie as well as outline a strategy for meeting those priorities. Changing internal and external conditions, additional knowledge and available resources may create a need to update or change a strategic plan. Periodic review is therefore essential to maintaining a a contemporary and effective document. The strategic, the strategic plan is a vital tool to assist the city council and to to establish policy and for the city manager to align resources and to implement policies. So toward that end, on May twenty-second, uh the council and the leadership team here at the City of Galt gathered and the council conducted a strategic planning session with the department directors. This happened back in May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. On July twenty-seventh, the executive team here at the City of Galt got together and created a uh planning session or held a planning session to essentially refine and to consolidate uh the comments and the plans that uh the council made on May twenty-second. The council came back on December sixth, refined those plans even more and and ended up crafting this into the document that you see before you in uh item H five. And so I want to, uh I'm gonna share this document and take you through it and um give me just a second. And so what we're looking for tonight is a resolution to essentially adopt these strategic goals. We start our strategic goals with the city's historic mission, vision and organizational values. And that the City of Galt, and I'm reading the mission statement now, the City of Galt is committed to providing exceptional public services and facilities that are sustainable and responsive, responsive to the needs of the community in an honest, efficient and fiscally responsible manner. Our vision is that we will be a premier, family-oriented community, united to create a unique Our vision is that we will be a premier, family-oriented community, united to create a unique city. With diverse shopping, dining, entertainment, and employment opportunities within a small-town atmosphere. Our organizational values indicate, or organizational values is that we've established the following. Values and principles to support the mission and guide and inspire leadership. The City of Galt values community service to the public. Accessible, open, honest, and responsive government, professionalism, fiscal responsibility. And our employees and that, and volunteers are valued. We also um, uh, take pride in our organizational cu- culture, and that is what this document entails. And so for any of members of the public who want to understand our organizational culture, uh, this is what we aspire to. We take pride in what we do, we provide excellent customer service, we have a can-do attitude, we don't quit. I can tell you that from the city manager's chair. And we're all about continuous equip- and, and continuous improvement. So I'm gonna present to you our strategic plan priorities for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three. The areas of emphasis are economic development, fiscal sustainability, improving fiscal sustainability. Maintain and improve Galt's quality of life. City council roles, internal succession planning within the city. Traffic mitigation, housing, and improving C Street. And so we'll start with the first uh, goal, and that is the area of economic development. The outcome that we're looking for is the pursuit of economic development opportunities to attract. And retain quality industrial and retail users that enhance the quality of life for Galt residents. And then we have a number of strategic tasks. Now, in these items that I'm going to be presented to you, the strategic task will be numbered. This is in no way indicating a priority, we just simply number them for organizational purposes. Typically, we're working on all the tasks at once, but it makes it easier and more um. Uh, from an organizational standpoint, if you actually have a number and you can go down the list. So strategic task with economic development is reevaluate existing infill fee reductions programs to ensure they are applicable. And effective for attracting commercial and industrial uh, users in Galt. We wanna develop incentive and resource programs that enhance business attraction and expansion efforts. We wanna focus on retail attraction, periodic review of economic development mes- metrics, including our sales leakage. Reports, we wanna target retailers that may locate to Galt based on sales leakage. Wanna collect and report feedback from retailers on outreach efforts. And we wanna conduct a retail survey of residents to determine what the desired commercial users, um, what our folks want here in Galt. Um, each of these items are owned by me, myself, and a particular member of our staff. In this instance, it's owned by myself and our economic development manager, Amy Mendez. The next item is improve fiscal sustainability, so we wanna ensure our city has a viable and sustainable financial resources. The public and the council shall be provided a reporting of the city's financial status on a periodic basis. We are actually working on those reports now. Strategic tasks, quarterly reporting, and periodic council briefing on revenue sources and expenditure utilization. Those reports and those items before council are coming in the next two months. Explore all revenue opportunities and continue to maximize utilization of expenditure. Ensure optimal utilization of measure our funding. Research near-term revenue enhancement for the city, i.e. sales tax measure and/or citywide CFD. The owners are myself and the incoming finance director. The next priority is to maintain and improve Galt's quality of life. And the outcomes we're looking for is to preserve and maintain Galt's small-time charm by improving community assets. Our strategic plat- task in this area are, it's a long list. And so we'll start with um, right at the top of the list, and we wanna complete the Galt Market Plan Visionary Document. Again, these items are not priorities, they are just listed for organizational purposes. So complete the Galt Market Visionary Document, which we actually completed tonight. Um, complete phasing and funding for Walker Park Improvement. And if, if citizens have been watching this council meeting, I've just gotten the green light to proceed with that particular task. Seek funding for the visionary plan for Old Town Galt, so we'll be looking at that in the near future. Systematically connect east and the east and west sides of Galt. We have a, we have a few efforts that are in play and some efforts that we put on a pilot. Um, activity um, back in the summer uh, to actually uh, bring this item to fruition. More on that later. Uh, we're gonna identify a secured, sustainable funding source for the city's parks. And recreational programs and services and maintenance of city facilities. We wanna explore additional hours and types of operations for a weekend market. And so for those folks who are watching this meeting, we just covered the beginnings of that particular item. Continue to improve public safety and related community engagements, we have a number of id- um, um, activities going on over the, at the PD. Which we will be reporting at, reporting out on in the next couple of months. Weeks, uh, explore options to address litter abatement within the city. Uh, back in December, Mayor Farmer brought up the prospect of using ARPA money for a litter abatement worker. And so we have earmarked forty thousand dollars for that particular service. And, and just letting the public know that even though these items are on our list. They are all in play right now. And nine, ensure public outreach and communication with the community. So we're wanna identify opportunities to engage more residents on existing social media platforms. Um, we're exploring opportunities for additional community ga- engagement, i.e. text alerts, town hall meetings, et cetera. And so those efforts are, are currently in play and are in the planning stages here at City Hall. The owners are myself and the entire executive team and staff here at the City of Galt. City council roles. Um, outcomes, suggested revisions to the council handbook. Strategic tasks, council meetings targeted to four hours based on start time. We can't promise they'll be, they'll end up with four hours, but we're gonna target four hours. Social media training shall be provided by staff on an annual basis, including AB nine ninety-two training for council members. City council to ensure staff provides the best recommendation, technical expertise. And options in the city's best interest. So for those folks who are wondering why this conversation goes on between the council. And the staff is they are now, they are responsible for ensuring that staff provides the best recommendation. Technical expertise and options uh, in the city's best interest. Next item, city manager and staff are committed to carrying out efficient city operations as per council's policy directives. Recommend current committee and commissions be reviewed on an annual basis to ensure consistent quorums. And to clarify liaison roles with current committee and commissioners. We wanna also review the handbook for councils, commissions, and committees in its entirety. The owners of that are myself and Tina uh, Hubert, our city clerk, and also the city council. The priority, the next priorities are internal succession plan, uh, planning. Um, with the um, quote-unquote graying of the workforce. We're having to make sure that we have enough folks coming up through the ranks. To address the vacancies brought on by folks who are retiring or transitioning to other uh, employment. And so what we wanna do under outcomes is create redundancy in key and non-key positions. And also identify those critical positions that need to be the focus of our internal succession planning. Our strategic task, we wanna identify tools to improve retention rates and succession of employees. We wanna build the bench and, and have that next group of managers. Have that next group of technicians ready to go in the event that some of our folks retire. We wanna grow our people, we're gonna provide education, we're gonna provide training. We're gonna redefine the City of Galt as a learning organization. The owners are myself and our human resources director, Stephanie Van Stein. The next priority is traffic mitigation. We wanna develop policies and solutions for traffic issues. Uh, strategic tasks, we wanna conduct speed surveys in areas where traffic activities warrant reviews. Wanna research fe- feasibility of preliminary evaluation of a quiet zone for the railroad spur that runs east to Ione. We wanna conduct outreach regarding the requirements for the placement of stop signs in the community. Uh, we wanna continue a solution-based approach for inquiries and requests. So the owners are myself, um, our public works director, Mike Selling, and our police chief, Brian Kalanowski. Housing.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes, sir.
Heinz, excuse me, sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. Can I ask the city attorney, do we need to have a, do we need to have a vote, uh, the council to extend the meeting past ten, ten PM? Because it's ten PM right now.
I thi- I think the resolution is eleven PM there.
Is it eleven, okay. I was trying to message you, but you didn't respond, okay, so we're good then?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, continue.
Yes, and Mayor, I'll be done long before eleven, okay? And so with the housing, um, we wanna improve the diversity of housing. That meets the community's needs and is consistent with state requirements. And the desires of the citizens of Galt. Let me reiterate, we wanna improve the diversity of housing. That meets the community's needs and is consistent with state requirements and the desires of the citizens of Galt. So that's our mantra for housing, our strategic task. We need to update the twenty-one through twenty-nine housing element, which actually really came back to us from the state, so we still have more work to do on that. We wanna update the City of Galt's development code. We wanna evaluate potential sewer and waterline replacement opportunities in Old Town Galt. To spur infill residential development in that area. We wanna meet state housing requirements, but stay flexible for other opportunities. We wanna explore proactive partnerships to develop positive projects to maintain local control. Wanna pursue multi-generational family projects. The owners of this particular uh, priority are myself and our community development director, Craig Hoffman. Improving C Street, and this is our last priority. Uh, we wanna increase the functionality and construction transparency on C Street. We wanna increase, and under strategic task, we wanna increase community outreach and input regarding construction improvement. Proactively through uh, construction of the project. We wanna research revised parking pattern to accommodate additional vehicles. And so the owners of this priority are myself and our public works director, Mike Selling. So for those folks watching, these are our priorities for the upcoming biennial. Or at least for the upcoming year, because twenty-twenty-three will be here before we know it. Sometime during the spring of twenty-twenty-three, most likely the winter of twenty-twenty-three. We will have another strategic planning session, and we will look at these goals and. And sort of assess what we, we're able to accomplish and develop new goals. I will like to, would like to reiterate to everyone watching. That these, as I mentioned earlier, these goals, this is a living, breathing document. And so as we get more information, as resources change. We want to make sure that the public is aware that these priorities may change, may morph. And, but for right now, here on January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, these are the priorities and council members. We are uh, we are asking if you would pass the resolution to basically put these priorities in stone. And um, so staff and I will know what our work. Uh, plan looks like for the next year and, for the next year and a half. And by the way, bef- before I give it back to councilman, thank you so much for all of your work on that, on this document as a council. I think we did excellent work and I'm, I'm very pleased to be associated with all five of you. And so uh, I just wanted to say that, this is, this is excellent work.
Alright, thank you, sir. And I know we uh, you know, worked on this and then we actually revisited it again because of some time lapse, so, you know. Appreciate everybody's patience on, on all that to make sure we get it right. So um, before I ask a, uh, council's um. Discussion on this, I'm gonna go ahead and let the public know, I'm gonna open the public comment. Period, so if you have a comment on this, please raise your hand online or uh, star night on the phone. So with that, do we have any council members that would like to make any comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, I do not have any question, but I'd like to thank you, Mr. Heinz. You know, this report, you worked a lot of hours on this report. And I also like to thank you for that previous port he minor uh, modified on that, thanks a lot for it. Thank you, and I will support that uh, strategically.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other council member have a comment? I can't see all of you, but I think if you raise your hand, I would pop up. Do we have any public comment, Tina?
No, hands raised.
Okay. Alright, I'll leave a few more moments for public comment. I know that uh, Mr. Heinz is glad to finally get this. This uh, this, this has been a long drawn-out thing, so finally get this uh. You know, and not, not in the rearview, because it's not something that just goes, it's always in the front view, but. So that wouldn't be the accurate uh, phrase to use, but.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to say for the public, um, and the council already knows this, but. Would like to say for the public that I'll be reporting out on our progress. On these uh, strategic goals on a quarterly basis, so at some point during April. You'll, you'll have an update on where we are on these, on these tasks.
Alright, do we have any public comment? Still no?
N- no public comment.
Alright, and uh, no comments from council, so with that, I will be looking, excuse me. I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the strategic plan as a vital tool to implement a plan of action to achieve results for fiscal years. Two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-three, do I have a motion to approve? To adopt, I'm sorry. Um, motion by um, Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilman Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papino? Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Resolution approved, uh, five zero. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to item I, communication, do we have any communication this evening, Tina?
None this evening.
Alright, move on to item J, city clerk's report?
Nothing this evening.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to item K, comments by staff, Mr. Heinz?
Um, I don't have a whole lot of comments, other than to thank the council for the direction given me tonight. Um, tomorrow will be a new day, and I appreciate your direction. Um, I'm gonna turn over to, turn this over to um, Director uh, Hoffman. And see if he has any comments for the good of the group.
I wasn't gonna tell them that I didn't get the housing element passed. But.
Just trying to be transparent, correct?
This council loves the state and there's gonna be some more love. So it's gonna be something I hope to have back in front of you in March, because we do need to get that done and, and. It's unfortunate, I'll just leave it at that. And other than that, I think in February, for those of. You that may be interested, we did receive the Fairfield. Uh, housing project at Carillion and Walnut, we'll be doing a workshop with the Planning Commission. In February, so we'll see how that goes, but uh, twenty-twenty-two, another year trying to implement. A lot of workshops and more public outreach, so that's what I'm looking forward to this year. So thank you much and have a great night.
Good, thank you, Director Hoffman. Uh, let's go with Director Mike Selling, um, Public Works.
No, uh, nothing uh, for me tonight, thanks.
Alright, let's go with our illustrious police chief, Brian Kalanowski.
Oh, great introduction, thank you. Couple of things, uh, obviously, uh, most of you, most all of you, I think we're all at the Ton Memorial this weekend, we thank you for your participation. And uh, again, I thank you to Mike Selling and his group, and Armando Solis and his group for the prep. Of both sites, um, and help with chairs and other things, so that was very helpful. Uh, this morning, we attended a academy graduation for our newest hire, Officer uh, Marie Valdez. You'll see her, more of her at the awards ceremony in February, we won't be swearing her in, because we did that at. Um, the graduation, but we'll certainly. the graduation, but we'll certainly give her an introduction to her then. And you'll see her around town, and she's already up on social media. On Monday, the mayor mentioned we have our public safety meeting at 6:00. It will be on Zoom. That should be posted by Thursday of this week. We'll be circulating a request for members to add any items to that, but we have tentatively, or currently, we have an update to the tobacco grant that we were awarded that will be passing through public safety, because it's on the tentative agenda for February 1st. And perhaps some topic or discussion about a drone program along with potentially some election of chairs and other administrative items currently for that, for that item. And then measure R, which was supposed to go on Wednesday, is going to get pushed. We'd like to wait for the annual audit report, so we can wrap up the audit report and second quarter activities all in one and not handle two meetings. And frankly, we've been hammered with COVID cases internally, and so we're doing our best to keep our head above water. We have great staff and we keep pushing, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And speaking of illustrious staff members, let's go with our illustrious Parks and Recreation Director, Armando Solis.
When you said that originally, I thought you were talking about me, but then you said police chief, but
Sorry, Armando.
Well, I haven't talked enough, so I want to talk a few more and show you some more slides. I just want to let council know and everybody know that we are accepting T-ball signups for girls and boys four to five years old, and that starts February 1st. Then we are also accepting registration for spring adult softball for men and coeds. Again, starts February 1st. And some sad news with some cancellations. Well, with the current spike in COVID-19, cancellation of three tours, concerns from vendors and presenters regarding COVID and withdrawal or lack of participation due to the indoor environment, we are moving the 2022 Winter Bird Festival to online. So that was some bad news. It's not something we wanted to do, but I think that we are going to have to do that. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions if any of you guys have any.
All righty, well, Director Solis, thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, city attorney Frank Splendoria.
Thank you. I have nothing further for the council tonight.
All righty. Well, I'm sorry, not last, our city clerk is also illustrious. Ms. Hubert, any comments for the group?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, all right. By the way, council members, I'm probably going to get a bad time tomorrow, because I referred to some directors as illustrious and others didn't do that with the others. So I just wanted you to know what kind of pain that awaits me in the morning. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing us to comment and I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. Abs, not looking, not good hearing that bad news from Craig, though.
Yeah.
This, this month is only three weeks old, and I already want my money back. I received. All right, moving on to comments by city council members, future agenda items. We'll start with our vice mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quick. Thank you for all these staff members giving us a good report, spending a lot of time, very clear report. And I'd also like to thank you, the Paulo comment, and I'd also like to thank the public watching us on the Zoom. And that's it tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Papino? As always, I want to thank the staff for their hard work. And I also want to take the time to tell each and every one of them that I truly appreciate your expertise and your experience that you, you bring to the table in addition to the hard work that you put in. So thank you for that and know that it's appreciated. And thanks also to the staff, the, all the staff that was involved in putting together the memorial. Very nice for Officer Ton. And then their respects paid during it to Officer Greewall and Deputy Gibson, and also Officer Herrera for their respective sacrifices. And lastly, thank you to the members of the public that reached out to participate in our meeting tonight, some with some difficulty due to technology. In some world, it makes sense that Kings and Lakers should have 12,199 members of the public plus staff at their event, but the 19 of us who are currently on this couldn't be in a room. So hopefully, we get through this soon. That's all I have. All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the staff for all the reports. Thank you for putting up with us for the past four-plus hours. It is very much appreciated. Thank you for everybody's effort during the memorial. It was, it was very good to see. And I hope everybody has a good week. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I will be very quick and just reiterate what others have said. Thank you to the staff. I really appreciate the opportunity in between meetings to meet and and get clarification and understanding what, what direction you're thinking about going. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate the public and the public comment today regarding Walker Park. And I think moving forward, I think we're going to have a good product out there. And it's going to, it's going to serve the community very well, not only the initial immediate community, but, but certainly as Director Solis mentioned, the TOE tax and the, and the sales tax and all of those other things that come along with amenities. And so it looks promising for, for, for our city. And then lastly, very well done memorial for Officer Ton. It was great to see his family out there and the family of others who have sacrificed. It was great to see Officer Herrera out there, you know, recovering. And, and so thank you all for who, all that attended. And, and hopefully next year, we'll have a a little bit larger celebration. It'll be 10 years. And so hopefully that will, that will happen. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. For me, just want to echo what others said about the the memorial was very well attended, very well put on, so everybody who was instrumental in making that happen. Thank you. It was good to see those families that were mentioned, the Greewall family, of course, the Ton family, Gibson family, the Herrera family, and see Capri out there was surprisingly astonished at how, how good she looked. I was kind of taken aback. I was expecting to maybe to see her still in a wheelchair. I didn't really know. And she was there and just good spirits and so that was good. And I want to think, you know, I want to think, I want to thank Craig and TJ, our Code Enforcement Officer, and, and also Mike Selling too, because I know he, I frequently ask him for things. But these guys do such a great job when it comes to like code enforcement stuff and issues, whatever, like they're like right on stuff, like answering my questions or, you know, we have citizens asking about maybe it's a homeless tent, or it's graffiti, or it's something. And Chief Kalinowski, you could, you very well deserve praise as well, but you guys are always fairly, really quick to respond. And it makes me look good, because the citizens are always saying, you know, wow, thank you for getting back to me so quickly. So, but I have to say, it's, it's you guys responding back and taking care of it that makes us look good. So thank you. And with that, everybody be safe. I guess we'll see everybody, what's our next date on our next meeting? February?
February 1st.
February 1st. All right. Well, with that said, thank you, everybody, for hard work on the reports tonight and bearing with us for four hours, four hours and five minutes. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:19 PM. Good night, everyone.
Good night.